Good evening. We're going to call the Oceanside Planning Commission meeting to order for April 19th. We'll start with the call to order, which I just did, and the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Morrissey, would you lead us in the pledge?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Mr. Morrissey. City Planner, if you could do a roll call.
Thank you. Good evening. Chair Rosales.
President.
Vice Chair Balma.
Present.
Commissioner Goodkind.
Present.
Commissioner Morrissey.
Here.
Commissioner Custer.
Here.
Commissioner Hayes.
Here.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Rains is participating via Zoom. Is he with us, Scott?
Yes. I'm present via Zoom.
There we go. Thank you. So I'll do some housekeeping, starting with an introduction quickly. And welcome to two new commissioners, Commissioner Hayes and Commissioner Rains. Welcome to the commission. This is your first meeting and our first in-public meeting, which leads me to the housekeeping. So bear with me as I read through this. So, effective April 19th, the city will be opening the council chambers to the public with but with limited capacity per health orders. So I offer the following to be shared with those applicants that are before us and interested parties. Members of the public are required to wear facial coverings except while providing testimony and are required to maintain appropriate social distances. The public will be required to wait outside the council chambers if capacity is reached. If required to wait outside the chambers, those wishing to testify will be allowed to enter the chambers only to provide testimony and then return to outside the chambers after testifying. When it is someone's turn to testify, their name and the next speaker's name will be called by staff, and names will be able to be heard even if you're outside the chambers. Everyone is asked to voluntarily wait outside the chambers until the item they are interested in is announced in order to better provide seating for each agenda item. Applicants will be allowed in the chambers even if seating capacity has been reached. It is suggested that only one representative for the applicant team be in the chambers with the other team members participating via Zoom. Participation via Zoom is still available, although this may be phased out as the chamber capacity is increased. And you can find the information about how to participate via Zoom on the first page of the planning commission agenda. Okay, let's proceed to the next item on the agenda, communications on matters not on the agenda. City Planner, anything come up?
Chairman, I believe we have one speaker who's interested in providing testimony on an item that is not on the agenda. So, Mr. Chairman, apparently he decided not to show up. So we do not have any requested speakers for non-agenda items.
Very good. Thank you. Takes us to our next item on the agenda, and that's approval of the minutes from the last meeting, which was on March 22nd. Approval of those minutes. Let me first ask if anybody would like to make a motion and/or if there's any discussion or changes for those minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Have a motion. Any second, any discussion?
I'll second.
We have a second and a motion. Any discussion? Seeing none. Do you want us to use our -- do you want us to raise hands tonight? I guess we're all here, except for Commissioner Rains.
Mr. Chairman, it's up to you, but for the minutes, you can simply say unless there's objections or consensus and pause a moment and see if someone objects.
Okay. Any objections to approval of the minutes? Seeing none, we'll consider those approved. Thank you. We don't have anything on our agenda tonight for the consent, counter, or transportation items, so we'll go to the public hearing items, starting with item number four. Item number four is consideration of development plan, conditional use permit, and variance for the construction of an automobile dealership, CarMax dealership in particular, located at the southwest corner of Plaza Drive and Thunder Drive. I'll ask for disclosures, starting with Commissioner Custer.
I read the staff report and drove by the site.
Thank you. Commissioner Morrissey?
Same.
Vice Chair Balma?
Also the same.
Commissioner Hayes?
Same.
Commissioner Goodkind?
Read the staff report and drove by the site, and I think we had some public communication via email. I read that as well.
We did. And Commissioner Rains?
Thank you, Chairman. I did drive by the site and had read the staff report, but have had no other contact.
Thank you. I too am familiar with the site, read the report, and Commissioner Goodkind is correct. We also had a couple of emails. Good evening, Mr. Greenbauer. How are you?
Good evening, Chair Rosales, members of the planning commission.
Are you presenting this evening?
Yes, sir, I do. Thank you, and congratulations to our new members for the planning commission tonight. The first time I'm presenting this evening is the CarMax. That's the first of my two items, which is a CarMax auto dealership requesting a development plan, additional use permit, and variance in order to establish a automotive supercenter off of Thunder and Plaza Drive. The proposal from CarMax is to do a phase construction of their sites. They have the property, which is adjacent to DMV, as well as the project or the 1.12 acre parcel to the north of Thunder Drive where the billboard sign is today, and that'll be Phase Two, just for car display purposes. The total parcel combination is 10 acres, and like I said, it'll be phased if and when the demand exists. With that, I provided an overview of the site location and the two parcels in question. Both hold a community commercial zoning and general plan designation, making it consistent with the zoning and general plan, subject to a variance for retaining wall, which I'll get into further in my presentation. The proposed site, I've got an illustrative showing the improvements, the landscaping along the perimeter with the canopy trees, as well as the layout. You'll see the main building is located on the southern portion of the southern site, and it'll include the service area, the sales building itself. There's a car wash, which is fully enclosed, and then a fuel tank, above-ground fuel tank for fueling of the vehicles. Just to the east, we do have City of Vista and some unincorporated county of San Diego lands to the east as well, and so it's on our eastern outskirts of the city here. The customer parking would access the site directly off of Thunder and would consist of approximately 148 parking spaces. The total square footages for the buildings totals 11,400 square feet, and there's the breakdown of the areas within the building and part of the overall development that'll be established onsite. In keeping with the CarMax corporate design, they are coming forward with a very simplistic design, but it is a corporate design, where they utilize split-faced CMU and earth-tone colors and then accents with metal roofs, as well as some metal glazing within the showroom area. Blue glazing, sorry. In consideration of the item in front of you tonight, there's a EIR was conducted. Comments were received, and based on the biological constraints of the site, the applicant proposes a approximately 2.74 acre conservation easement over the southern portion of that area in order to establish a 100-foot buffer from the wetland habitat, as well as allow for a combined joint venture, not joint venture, but a grand opportunity with the city to restore that section of Buena Vista Creek. And I know some of the comments that were received alluded to the retaining wall and the combinations. I've got some clarity slides that I'll present to you this evening and for the public in attendance via Zoom. And the variance would allow a retaining wall and split-face block that's non-planable and have a height combination in excess of the code requirements. In order to help preserve that 2.74 acres, this is necessary in order to establish the pad area for the actual auto dealership. So in conjunction with that retaining wall, there is existing utilities, water and sewer along that southern portion, and those are, as part of the project's conditions, they are relocating those to a more northerly area and will still have a maintenance area. So that's why they've introduced a channeling fence in some of those areas along the southern border. Here's one of the images that I wanted to clarify. I know that the applicant has a presentation that'll cover a lot of the issues that were brought forward and comments, and so there might be some duplicative discussions, but I'll go ahead and present this. You can see the retaining wall. This is on the western portion of the site on the bottom with the vines that'll be used to climb the wall to help screen and soften that look as you look from the south. The image on the top left is the image from Thunder Drive. So as you look back towards the wall, you'll see the gray daylights out to the customer parking and employee parking area, and around that, there'll be wrought iron, and then there will be fencing to keep people out of the sewer easement because there's a large, I want to say homeless people that are utilizing the area down there. So this will help enhance the habitat as well. With that, staff has looked at consistency with general plan zoning, determined that it is consistent with the general plan goal 2.21 for community commercial sites, although not 30 acres in size. It is 10.52 acres side along a major arterial, which is one of the requirements, and it is an exceptional employment and economic generating type land use, so it is consistent with the general plan in that manner. In addition, subject to approval of the variance, it is conditioned in the conditional use permit, it meets and exceeds the standards of the development, standards for the zoning, and staff recommends approval of the project. With that, the commission's action should be to adopt the first resolution, 2021 P14, which will certify the environmental impact report, along with the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program and findings of fact. The second action would be to adopt the planning commission resolution, 2021 E15, approving the development plan, conditional use permit, and variance, subject to findings and conditions of approval that are attached. I know that there's a lengthy amount of conditions in there, but that was what was warranted to move this project forward, and I'll make myself available for any comments. We do have the applicant's representative, CenterPoint. They're on via Zoom to do a presentation, and so if I could turn that over to Mr. Nightingale to upload Mr. John Thatcher with CenterPoint representing CarMax.
Thank you, Mr. Greenbauer. Before you go, any questions for staff? Don't see any, but, oh, go ahead. Commissioner Goodkind?
We're not using our request to speak button tonight? No?
Yeah, if we're in the chambers, just wave your hand like that. Go ahead.
I was looking for the two emails that we got. One from, let's see, the two comments.
Nadine Scott was one, and...
We did have a couple of emails that were sent in with comments on the weekend, one on Saturday, one on Sunday. We have friends of Loma Alta Creek, Nadine Scott submitted comments, as well as Diane Nygaard.
Yeah, I was looking for Diane's because she had several issues, and I was going to ask you to address them, but I'll keep looking for the email while the applicant speaks.
Okay, because the applicant is fully here to address a lot of those comments. Those have been forwarded to them as well, and it's part of their presentation that they put together tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Richard. We'll call you back if we have any other questions.
Thank you.
Scott, are we ready?
Okay, John.
Evening.
Good evening. If you would introduce yourself and then walk through your presentation.
Absolutely. My name is John Thatcher. I am with CenterPoint Integrated Solutions. We are a development consultant for CarMax. Here with me tonight is the rest of the project team. We have JM Dixon and Steve Hudak from the CarMax Real Estate Department, Rob Readeen and Reyna Del Rosario from REC Consultants, our local civil engineering firm, Justin Reyes, Reyes, excuse me, from LOS Engineering is our traffic consultant, Melissa Busby from Busby Biological Services, our biological consultant, and Whitney Hodges from Shepherd Mullen, our local land use attorney. We appreciate you having us here tonight. We've got a short presentation for you, and then, following that, as a team, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have. I'm going to attempt to share my screen, and hopefully everyone can see this.
Okay, we see it, John?
Yes, we can see that.
All right, great. So before we get into the specifics of the site and the operations, I wanted to tell you a little bit about CarMax as a company for those who may not be familiar. CarMax is the nation's largest retailer of used vehicles. They are committed to making a positive impact on society by being connected to their communities, respectful of the environment, and being a great place to work, and also committed to their customers. In 1993, CarMax revolutionized the automotive retail industry by offering, excuse me, no-haggle pricing and by driving integrity, honesty, and transparency at every interaction. The company offers a truly personalized experience. They have options for customers to do as much or as little as they'd like, online, in-store, or any combination of the two. They provide a variety of vehicle delivery methods, including home delivery, contactless curbside pickup, and appointments for in-store pickup. CarMax has their headquarters in Richmond, Virginia. They have over 220 stores nationwide and over 25,000 associates. They are proud to have been recognized for 16 years in a row as one of Fortune 100's best companies to work for. During fiscal year 2021, CarMax sold more than 750,000 pre-owned cars, and they have staying power. CarMax has never closed a store in their 28 years of business. CarMax also gives back. The CarMax Foundation promotes causes that their associates are proud to be associated with, that have a positive impact on the community where they live and work. Today, CarMax Foundation has provided over $55 million in donations, including over $2 million within the state of California. CarMax is continuing to expand its nationwide footprint, is looking forward to the opportunity to open a store here in Oceanside. And that brings us to the illustrative plan we have here. Just to get you oriented, north is up on this plan. So we've got Plaza Drive to the north here and Thunder Drive to the east. A quick overview, you can kind of break the site down into three distinct areas. You have the sales display area, which is this area that has its frontage along Plaza Drive, and that's where the inventory of vehicles for sale are displayed. So Phase One would be the area south of Plaza Drive here, and Phase Two would be the area north of Plaza Drive, as denoted on the plan. The customer-employee parking area would be located along the Thunder Drive frontage along the eastern side of the site. That's the public parking area, as any commercial or retail operation would have. That's where the primary site access will be provided. And then in the rear corner of the site, we have what's known as the staging area. This is really CarMax's back-of-house area where cars are stored and prepped for sale. That is screened from the public view by a six-foot-tall screening wall, and then there are buildings more or less centered on the site. Buildings on site consist of what they call the sales building, which is the waiting room, offices, restrooms, et cetera. They have the vehicle service area adjacent to that, and then a standalone car wash, which is just for CarMax use, washing their inventory of vehicles for sale. A few key aspects of the proposed plan that I would like to touch on. Parking, the public parking lot shown here would contain approximately 148 spaces, meeting the zoning ordinance and providing sufficient parking for customers, employees onsite. It's been sized appropriately, using data from CarMax's existing stores, so there won't be any need to utilize any of the on-street parking on Thunder, and all customers and employees visiting the site will be able to park within that public parking area. There'll be six handicap spaces provided adjacent to the building entrance. There will be 22 electric vehicle charging spaces provided throughout the site in total, as well as bike storage lockers for eight bikes located in the northwest corner of the parking lot. Lighting, the site will utilize LED lighting fixtures, which will be full cutoff with a flat lens, which is downcast to reduce light spill on adjacent properties. The site light levels will be reduced after operating hours via an automated system, so it happens automatically. They'll be reduced by 25% for the first hour after closing and then down to 50% after Regarding traffic, a local transportation study has been prepared for the project. The project traffic generation was calculated using a trip generation rate based on a survey of three open and operating CarMax locations of similar size. Using this trip generation rate, the project is forecasted to generate approximately 475 average daily trips. And these findings were used to determine the effects caused by the project traffic and help determine CarMax's fair share for any roadway improvements necessary, which brings me to the public improvements proposed for this site. So along with this development, CarMax will be providing for a full-depth replacement and widening of Plaza Drive along the project frontage. That will include the restriping of three travel lanes, two eastbound and one westbound lane, along with a center two-way left-turn lane in order to match the existing westbound single travel lane configuration. There will be striping of bike lanes on both sides of Plaza Drive, as well as an installation of sidewalks and landscaping on both sides of Plaza Drive. Along the Thunder Drive frontage, there will be a slurry seal and widening along the project frontage. The parking will be restricted along the project frontage side of Thunder Drive between the two driveways. And then finally, along the southern portion of the site, we have the biological buffer and conservation easement area, and I have a slide here for that. We are meeting the draft Oceanside Subarea Plan buffer requirements. The riparian vegetation was mapped with GPS during a focused wetland delineation in August of 2019, and I know this is somewhat difficult to see, but I'll try to point it out with my cursor here. So the riparian area would be approximately this area, and then we're providing a 50-foot biological buffer from that boundary, which would be approximately this line here, and then an additional 50-foot planning buffer from the edge of the biological buffer. So that would be that area there. So combined, a 100-foot buffer, which will be entered into a conservation easement. That conservation easement will cover that combined 100-foot buffer area and additional lands, as requested by the agencies. So in effect, it will cover the entire area south of the sewer easement, the entire area within the project boundary south of the sewer easement. That sewer easement is shown approximately here, and that dash line, everything's south. And this area would be protected by fencing along Thunder Drive and along the onsite public parking area, so approximately there. Mitigation requirements, the buffers and conservation easement are intended to protect the sensitive biological resources within and adjacent to Buena Vista Creek, but they're not intended as mitigation for the project impacts. So there are impacts to 0.408 acres of coastal sage scrub, which will be mitigated at a three-to-one ratio with coastal California net catcher occupied habitat and an agency-approved mitigation bank. We're currently coordinating with the agencies and the city to determine the appropriate agency-approved mitigation bank. Those requirements will be determined prior to project construction. Excuse me. And then finally, the status of the biological resources. There are biological surveys being conducted, again, in 2021 to complete those surveys, which were interrupted during 2020. If the status of any sensitive biological resource change from those that are presented in the BTR, BTR/EIR, and if it is determined that the proposed project would result in any additional impacts, then an addendum will be prepared that discusses these impacts and the appropriate method for avoidance, minimization, or mitigation. And to finish up, we do have some renderings here. I know some of these were shown in Richard's presentation, but just wanted to give you an idea of what the finished product will look like. CarMax really built a top-of-the-line facility. They take great pride in maintaining a clean, organized, and well-kept property. And here, we have maybe a clearer view of the renderings done to show the conservation easement area. This first view here is from Thunder. Here you can see, it would be further south down Thunder Drive, looking back towards the project over the conservation easement area. And in the distance there, you can sort of see the proposed retaining wall, which, again, is located north of the sanitary easement and completely outside of the conservation easement area. And that wall will only be necessary on the far side of the development, approximately 400 feet away from Thunder Drive, and the wall is proposed to be covered by vines to help it blend into the surrounding environment, as you can see on the rendering. And the second one here, this is a view closer to the wall from within approximately the kind of the edge of the conservation easement area, so southwest corner of the site, looking near the wall, looking back towards it. This is not a view that would be available to the public, but we wanted to provide a closer view of that retaining wall area. This would be more of the view from Thunder Drive. So that is our presentation. We are happy to answer any questions or hear any feedback you have. We do kindly ask that the CarMax team be allowed a chance to respond to any public or city comments prior to any action being taken, but myself and the rest of the project team are here and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Commissioner Goodkind, I'll ask you, do you want to start with questions?
I wasn't able to locate the emails, but I'm curious, the car washing, I guess this is a question for the applicant or staff, the car washing part of the business is towards the back, towards the rear of the parcel? And I'm wondering what the environmental study concluded about runoff from the car wash, given that there's sensitive habitat back there?
Yeah, maybe we can pull up the slide that shows the site plan. So I guess I believe that site plan showed where the car washing would take place, but if the applicant is still on the phone, if you got that question and had a question about runoff from the car washing activity and how that's being handled.
I will share my screen again. And regarding the studies, I would invite... And regarding the studies, I would invite Melissa to tell us what studies would have, what the findings of the studies would have been regarding the car wash.
Hi, I'm Melissa Busby. I actually think that's a question for Raina with the runoff and the water studies that were done.
Is Raina part of the applicant team? There we go. You must be Raina.
I'm Raina. We prepared the EIR for the project. And so the wastewater from the car wash will go into an oil-water separator and to be reused in the car wash and chemicals and oil will be separated and taken off-site to be treated. We also have our civil engineer who would be, if you guys had any question on more stormwater particulars, but in terms of the car wash, it'd be separated and taken off-site for disposal.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Vice Chair Obama?
Thank you. Couple of questions. First, when you mentioned the improvements you're going to be doing along the street, Plaza Drive, you had shown that Phase Two is going to be on the north side of Plaza Drive. But you show, I think you said you were going to be improving both sides when you do this project on Phase One. Is that correct? Should be doing both improvements on the south and the north side?
Rob Reddine, can you advise us to the proposed timing of those?
We are proposing, yes, we are proposing both sides. We're doing the curb gutter and sidewalk along the north side of Plaza. We are not proposing to do the landscaping until that side is necessary for CarMax's operations. And if I may speak real quickly to the last question on the stormwater and the car wash. I'm not quite sure of the percentage. A certain amount of the car wash water must be reused within the system. It used to be 50%, and I think it's much higher now. And then any water that leaves there, we have a grease oil separator. And then that is actually discharged into the septic system. The water from the car wash is either reused or discharged to the septic system. It doesn't go into the stormwater system.
And Rob, that number is approximately 90%.
Right, right. So I mean, it won't affect the stormwater from the site.
Great, thank you for that clarification. Any other questions?
Yeah, I had another question. On the conservation easement, who will actually maintain that easement? Is that something that CarMax does? Or do you like hire another company to do that? Or is that a city? How does that fly?
Melissa or Raina, could you please address that question?
Yeah, in the discussions that we've been having so far with this city, short-term, the city would include that as part of their planning efforts to restore the ecosystem that surrounds Buena Vista Creek. And eventually, it would be handed off to a third-party land manager, like the Center for Natural Lands Management or somebody like that, that who would maintain the entire creek and then the surrounding upland habitats as well.
That's, thank you. And then the other question I had was one of the ones from the letter. We, you had a couple of letters from the public. And one of their questions was on the black chain link fencing that cruises along Thunder Drive, then it goes across the property where the parking area is for the customer and employee parking. And they had asked if it's going in front of that wall, creating a no-man's land. Is that chain link fence actually end at the retaining wall?
Yeah, that is correct. It will end at the retaining wall.
Thank you.
Any other Commissioner questions? Commissioner Rains, I can't see you at the moment. I don't know if you had any questions for the applicant?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, just I wanted to give a thank you to city staff for a great presentation, and also CarMax for a good presentation on their end. My question would be probably twofold. How much, for as far as economic impact, how many jobs do they anticipate this creating? And how much tax revenue does the city anticipate collecting?
In terms of jobs, I do have the estimated employment numbers in front of me. Approximately 80 total employees, 65 full-time, 15 part-time. And as to the economic impact of the development, I would invite J.M. Dixon or Steve Hudek to opine on that.
This is J.M. Dixon. I apologize, I do not have that number in front of me. I know that we worked closely with the city. We've got a tax-sharing agreement that, maybe Whitney? I don't know if that number is in that tax-sharing agreement, Whitney, that you worked on with the city?
Good afternoon. This is Whitney Hodges with Shepherd Mullen. No, that number is not in the tax-sharing agreement that I'm looking at right now, but I can continue to review. And if I can find it during the penancy of this hearing, I will definitely let the commissioners know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hayes, you got a question?
I was just curious, how many spaces are being provided in the Phase Two lot? How many parking spaces?
Applicant, did you get that question? How many spaces in the overflow development area, Phase Two?
Yes, I am looking at that right now. I see approximately. Bear with me for one second. We didn't break that number up separately. It would be 68 spaces to the, in the Phase Two component on the northern side of Plaza Drive.
And a follow-up question to that is, I know that that's supposed to be display spaces, so I'm assuming those are cars that are for sale that will be available for test driving and purchasing.
That is correct.
So I think my question is, how will employees from the main site on Phase One access that lot?
Rob, are you able to address that question?
We've looked at that extensively, and the honest answer is that it's anticipated that employees will drive to that lot. Two employees in a car will drive to that lot. And then any cars that are needed will be driven back to, across the street, to CarMax Phase One side.
Okay, that addresses my concern. I was seeing a jaywalking issue popping up there potentially and a safety concern. So if that's the plan, that makes me feel a lot better. I have no other questions.
Great, thank you. We can always come back if there are additional questions. It is a public hearing, and we're glad to see some faces in the audience and those join us on Zoom. So we'll throw it open to the public. City Planner, do we have any slips to address this item?
Mr. Chairman, we have three speakers who've requested to speak on this item. Scott Nightingale will introduce them.
Okay. Our first public speaker is Whitney Hodges, and we have Diane Nygaard on deck. So Whitney, the floor is yours.
Whitney's the lobbyist.
I'm sorry. Diane Nygaard, you are actually the first speaker. And Joan Herzwick is the second speaker. So Diane, you're on board now?
Good evening, Commissioners. Diane Nygaard, representing Preserve Calavera. This site certainly has some particular challenges because of its location adjacent to Buena Vista Creek and adjacent to a residential neighborhood. And that's certainly not typical of CarMax facilities. And they got many of the things right, given those challenges. But there were five things that we think are still problematic that were identified in our letter. And it sounds like perhaps not all of you have actually seen those written comments that were submitted on Sunday. Hopefully you have. If you haven't, I would certainly ask that the staff make sure that you all receive that because we do think public input is an important part of this process. We're particularly concerned that the conservation easement, that figure that was shown tonight, was not included as part of your documents in the staff report that we could find or any description of the conditions associated with that conservation easement. And that, of course, is critical to protect the creek. But the other key neighborhood concern was the loss of at least, it appears to be nine on-street parking spaces. You heard the applicant say that they didn't need any on-street parking for their project. The problem is they're taking away on-street parking that's now used by both DMV and the neighborhood. And that certainly is a concern to the adjacent neighbors. So we would ask that you make sure that all of those issues that we've raised have been addressed. We think they're important to achieving the kind of project that we all want to see, one that fits with our community and it's a good neighbor to both the creek and to the residential neighborhood that it's next to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nygaard. Next speaker?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joan Herzwick. And our next speaker on deck will be Christopher Allen. Go ahead, Joan.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm in the Conservation Chair for the Buena Vista Audubon Society. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Our conservation efforts focus primarily on protection and enhancement of the Buena Vista Lagoon Ecological Reserve and the watershed that drains into it. The health of the lagoon is very dependent on habitat protections along Buena Vista Creek, particularly in segments where commercial development backs onto the creek. We have two main concerns. The staff report mentioned that there would be a three-to-one off-site replacement for the loss of California nat catcher habitat. However, the location of the site has not been identified. The main purpose of an EIR is transparency with regard to impacts and mitigation. The mitigation site should be located within the Wildlife Corrida Planning Zone and should be identified in the final EIR so the public can be informed of its adequacy prior to EIR certification. The second issue relates to the riparian buffer. The 100-foot riparian buffer on this property will be placed in a conservation easement. However, the proposed buffer area is in a very degraded condition, and the proposal has no plan for restoration of native vegetation to support the needs of riparian and upland wildlife. In order to mitigate the many direct and indirect project impacts, the buffer should be restored with coastal sage scrub vegetation and endowed with funds for long-term management. On this point, the EIR defers to the city. However, the grant awarded to the city for a creek restoration is only for planning purposes with no funds identified for the actual restoration. And there is no assurance, as asserted in the EIR, that the upland buffer areas will be managed by a city-funded land manager. This is the first that I've heard of this. I'm not sure that this is insured. A riparian buffer is not only a place between the development footprint and the creek, it is also used by wildlife for movement and foraging and needs to be restored and protected for the long term. Therefore, we request that you not recommend certification of the EIR until these concerns are addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we had one more speaker?
Yes, the last speaker is Christopher Allen.
Good evening. My name's Christopher Allen. I'm a member of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. I'm also a resident in North County. I live, work, and recreate in the vicinity of the project. We support the project, and in addition to adding good jobs for local community, we are pleased to see the applicant has voluntarily worked with the carpenters to adopt additional measures to benefit the environment. The applicant has agreed to add electrical vehicle charging stations to the project. The city will require the use of Tier Four final construction equipment. And the Southwest Regional Council Carpenter is also pleased to see that the city and the applicant will adopt safe COVID-19 work practices to protect the health and safety of construction workers on the project. Thank you very much for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is that it for speakers?
Yes, that's it.
Thank you. So we'll bring it back to the applicant and/or the commission. One of the speakers had a question or made a comment that I was thinking about myself during the presentation, and that is the 100-foot easement, conservation easement, whether or not, because I took a look at it the other day when I was there, and it doesn't, I think it's longstanding that that area's not been doing very well. So the question about restoring it was made by one of the, I think it was Joan. So that's a question for the applicant. And applicant, I don't know if you heard the other comments, but if you could address that one as a start? Any plans to restore that 100-foot conservation area or just preserve it?
I would invite Melissa Busby to address that comment.
During our early conversations with the city for the project, one of the things that they mentioned about the conservation easement is that they've got this grant funding for the restoration of Buena Vista Creek. And instead of trying to piecemeal the upland areas with the creek portion that's within and adjacent to the proposed CarMax property, instead of, you know, doing little pieces of it to include it in the overall planning so that it has a better chance at success overall and it's more cost-effective, and then it can be managed together to, you know, provide better quality habitat for wildlife and just overall, you know, increase the potential for the success of the project. So we also have, we have the 50-foot biological buffer. We have the 50-foot planning buffer. But also, per the agencies, like John mentioned earlier, they've asked us to include everything that's south of the sewer access road. So it includes even additional areas along most of that area. So it's even a larger buffer than 100 feet in most areas.
Okay, thank you. And I apologize, Commissioners. If you have the ability to press the button saying, hey, I'd like to speak, I think we're going to go with that, but also accept hands. So any comments or questions, any Commissioners? Don't see any in the chambers. Commissioner Rains, anything from you?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So we've gotten the public input, and the applicant provided some input. Any further deliberation or motion? Commissioner Morsey?
I just want to say, I recently sold a vehicle to CarMax Nescandito, and what John had to say is true. They're very professional, and it was a very clean operation. It was very good, and I think it'll be a great add to the city. And the fact they're bringing in 80-plus jobs is a good thing. So with that said, if there's any more discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 202114, certifying the final EIR 2020089012, and adopting the mitigation monitoring and reporting and findings of fact. In light of the whole record, the project will not have significant effect on the environment. And number two, adopt Planning Commission Resolution 2021P15, Improving Development Plan D1921, CUP 1929, and Varian's V25, with findings and conditions of approval attached herein.
And City Planner, we can capture both of those. I mean, sometimes I know the EIR we've done as a separate motion and then voted on the other entitlements. Can we capture it all in a single motion?
There's no problem with you making one motion for both items.
Great, thank you.
If there's a difference of opinion on the different items, you would then need to back out and separate.
Thank you. So we have a motion, Commissioner Morsey. Anybody would like to second that?
I would second.
Vice Chair Obama has seconded. Are we going to be using our vote by the screen option? Vice Chair Obama has second. Are we going to be using our vote-by-the-screen option this evening? City Planner? If not, we can go to the--
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure we're that technologically advanced tonight, so maybe the old-fashioned way of raising a hand.
We'll go the old-fashioned way. I'll do the roll call, actually, so--
That would be best.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yes, Commissioner Goodkind.
I'm just not sure that question that you asked was answered, and I'm wondering if staff could provide their response to that question about restoration of the conservation zone and what staff's perspective is on that?
Absolutely. Who wants to tackle that? Mr. Greenbauer, it looks like?
Hey, Commissioner Goodkind, thank you for the question there and clarity. During the EIR process, we did work diligently with the agencies to address this area restoration. At the same time, our environmental compliance officer, Justin Gamble, has moved forward with the grant for restoration and maintenance. So everything's been addressed to the agency's satisfaction as far as mitigation offsite, and that does come back to staff later, and it'll make sure that it's in the PAMA, within the corridor planning zone. I know they're already moving forward prior to even receiving entitlement, opening up those discussions with the agencies again. So they've satisfied everything as far as restoration and maintenance is needed, and they've given us a letter to work with us as far as that wetland habitat. So I think she made a very thorough explanation of not piecemealing it together, the upland and the wetland, and doing it all as one larger project. We understand it's a grant funding at this point, but we're moving forward with several funded restoration projects. Hopefully that answers the question.
Yes, thank you so much for the clarification. I'm a fan of CarMax myself, and I also appreciate the economic benefits to the city, and I just wanted those environmental questions addressed. So I am in support of the project.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just elaborate on Richard's comments. We agree with the BV Society that the ideal location for the mitigation site would be in the wildlife corridor planning zone. It's not always feasible, so we will try to implement that, but we can't guarantee it.
Yeah. Appreciate that explanation. Okay, I'll do a roll call. Commissioner Goodkind? Commissioner Hayes?
Aye.
Vice Chair Obama?
Yes.
Maker of the motion, Commissioner Morsi?
Yes.
And Commissioner Custer?
Yes.
Commissioner Rains?
I vote in the affirmative to approve the project.
Thank you. And I too am a yes. City Planner?
Mr. Chairman, we'll mark that as seven in favor, zero against. The motion passes.
Great, thank you. Thank you, applicant, and good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item number five is consideration of a development plan and exceptions to certain specific plan development standards to allow the construction of a three-story horizontal mixed-use project located at the northeast corner of Senior Citizen Drive and Village Commercial Drive. This is in the El Corazon development area. The applicant is Sudbury Development. I'll start with disclosures. Commissioner Goodkind?
Yes, thank you. I am familiar with the site, read the report, and I don't think we had any additional public communication on this item. If so, I did not read it.
Thank you. Commissioner Hayes?
I also read the report, reviewed the plans, and know the site.
Thank you. Vice Chair Obama?
I have the same disclosure.
Commissioner Morsi?
Reviewed the staff report, reviewed the drawings, and know the site well.
And Commissioner Custer?
Read the staff report, and I know the site.
Thank you. Commissioner Rains?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am familiar with the site and have reviewed staff reports.
Thank you. I too am very familiar with the area, read the staff reports. I don't recall any other emails either. Commissioner, or Commissioner. Mr. Greenbauer?
Chair Rosales, members--
Welcome again, and if you'd like to walk us through your presentation.
All right, Chair Rosales, members of the Planning Commission. Item number two tonight, I know I've brought a lot of projects forward to you from El Corazon recently. It's been a very busy year. So 2020's been positive for El Corazon because we're moving projects through out there. And this is the culmination of the remaining residential that's allowed out on the larger park area, and the request is for a development plan and exception to certain development standards, which I'll get into in my presentation. Following my presentation, we do have the applicant's representative, Dan Niebaum, with Lightfoot Planning Group, in attendance this evening, so he'll present from this podium. And we also have a very robust development team from Sudbury that will be here to answer any specific questions relative to the site planning and development of this mixed-use site. With that, we do also have a robust attendance of staff here, engineering, all disciplines, transportation, as well as our city engineer, and our stormwater and development engineers are here and available, and we do have some online as well. With that, I've showing one of the specific plan map areas, which designates all the sites within El Corazon. I've circled in yellow the Village Commercial area that will be part of the El Corazon mixed-use project. It's immediately east of the senior center and aquatic center that's under construction, south of the Ventana Townhomes, which are under construction to the north, and then to the south, you have A Street that comes in off Rancida del Oro, and then Village Commercial, which will transect the arena that came before this body not too long ago, and the actual mixed-use project. I've provided an overview of the mixed-use development consisting of 268 residential apartments with 20, within 22 buildings. Approximately 4,700 square feet of commercial will be separated in the two crimson-red buildings located along Village Commercial Drive. Those are seven-plex buildings, so that'll be a vertical portion of the mixed-use, and then it spreads out horizontally. You can see the amenities with the clubhouse pool area, and then I'll get into the open space areas. That'll be satisfied for this overall development in a minute. Here's an overview with the landscaping and open space that'll be provided. You'll see almost 31,000 feet of common open space for the residents and 20,000 square feet of private open space for each one of the residents, totaling over 52,000 for the site. For the commercial components of the mixed-use project, the two seven-plex buildings that I alluded to earlier, you can see the extensive plaza area that they've provided incorporated per the specific plan in order to make it a pedestrian-friendly, inviting-type commercial experience. And as I get into the exceptions, we'll show the retaining walls that are needed to kind of separate the pad elevation of the apartments from that commercial component. Overall, you can see there's a good mix of workforce-type housing in a rental capacity, 113 one-bedroom units, 122 bedroom, and then 35 three-bedroom units. All parking can be provided onsite, although the site is very close to transit. It is essentially a transit-oriented type development, and I'm sure it'll see its fair share of usage once these get developed in that area. We do have the Sprinter line as well as a large NCTD bus route in close proximity. In order to show pedestrian connectivity, I know the applicant's representative has a more, a larger overview of all the components of El Corazon, how they tie together below, and that'll be in their presentation. So I'm not going to get real detailed into that for you this evening, but I will show a typical road section of Village Commercial Drive, which will eventually be renamed to another drive, but we refer to it as Village Commercial. And it includes 12-foot parkways on both sides, as well as 5-foot bike lanes, east and west side. So that'll also help inspire and incorporate the pedestrian orientation there for that portion of El Corazon, which is on the eastern extent of the park. With that, I've got an illustrative showing the, this is one of the seven-plexes with the commercial element on the bottom floor. You can see behind the trees the walls that are, the exceptions are being requested for, and that's to separate the overall apartment area from that commercial component and establish that large plaza area. You can see they incorporate vertical and horizontal articulation, 360-degree architecture on all their buildings, and they bring forward arcades, open canopies, very clean lines, and simple forms, very reminiscent of the Gill-type architecture and aesthetic. I've taken a cross-section of those buildings, once again, just showing the retaining wall components where the exceptions are being requested. And that's for retaining walls in excess of 3 1/2 feet in the front yard and 6 feet in other yard areas, and allowing retaining walls over 4 feet in height as non-planable retaining walls. Similar to CarMax that was before you, there will be landscaping and things utilized to screen those structures, but there will be fence and wall combinations in excess of the code, hence the exceptions, which are allowed per the specific plan. With that, I've just, a quick illustrative showing with the retaining wall-fence combination with the wrought iron and how it'll vary throughout the site based on topography. As you know, it kind of, as you go down slope from RDO to the south, the grade differential is significant, so it will vary at various spots within the project site. With that, staff focused on consistency with the general plan and zoning ordinance and has determined that the project is cited and architecturally designed to implement a horizontal mixed-use project within Irving Gill aesthetic on the 12-acre site, which is identified in El Corazon's specific plan and meets that vision to bring that type of development forward in this area of the site. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission confirm issuance of a categorical exemption because the project is pursuant to a specific plan and approve development plan and exceptions to the specific plan development standards by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 2021P16. And that concludes my presentation. I will be available for any questions or comments, and I'll turn it over to the applicant's representative for his presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for staff before we go to the applicant? Commissioner Rains?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. Applicant, if you're ready, or Scott, you want to queue him up? Good evening, Dan.
Mr. Niebaum is in house. Loaded up. Thank you. I've been in front of you a few times via Zoom. It's encouraging to be here in person.
Nice to be back, isn't it? Good to see you, Dan.
Thank you. Dan Niebaum, with Lightfoot Planning Group, offices in Carlsbad, representing the applicant, Sudbury Development, here tonight. And as Richard mentioned, the team members of Sudbury Development are available via Zoom, and our consultant team's also available. And I'm obviously here to help answer any questions we may have. Appreciate Richard's presentation, and again, represented by the amount of staff in the room tonight, we really appreciated the chance to work with them throughout the past year on the projects in El Corazon. We were in front of you in February with the Arena project, and very happy to be here tonight with this mixed-use project. Again, as Richard's presentation alluded to, the mixed-use project implements this mixed-use vision for this portion of El Corazon. It's 268 apartment homes and 4,700 square feet of commercial space integrated into those first two buildings that are fronting Village Commercial Drive. Really creates an integrated site design and an integrated plan within El Corazon. Richard also had mentioned this, you know, back when El Corazon was approved, that they added the units to the project because of its proximity to the Sprinter station. It's in a smart-growth area identified by Sandegg. It's a transit-priority area, and it's a great opportunity to expand the amount of residential units in this area that can take advantage of its position near those transit opportunities and near the other items that are developing within El Corazon, along with the park space primarily. Richard had shown you this, and again, this is the map, the yellow dots, the location of the commercial project or the mixed-use project in the Village Commercial area in the eastern portion of El Corazon. Again, this is the tenant map that was approved by the city, by the Planning Commission and City Council back in December of 2019, along with a specific plan amendment that adjusted some of the land use areas. You may remember that, but this was really the setup for some of these lot areas and these projects that are coming before you now. This is a more current aerial of the site and the surrounding areas of El Corazon. And as Richard mentioned, we have a, my next slides are really a composite of the development scenarios that are happening in El Corazon, how these areas relate to each other. When we were in front of the Steering Committee, they had a couple of questions just on maybe how things fit together, and we talked about some of this when we had the Arena project here in February. But my next few slides will walk you through some of that, and I think some of it would be obvious to some of you that are familiar with the project, but I think it really helps to show how everything is tying together. So that was originally the aerial that's out there now. This is kind of our first phase. This is the backbone infrastructure that was approved with the tentative map. Again, this is conceptual, this is graphic, but it represents these areas and these development components. And then you see the Ventana project, the 70 townhomes that are being built nearly complete out there. They're not a part of this development. The other square that's not a part above that is the hotel project that was approved by City Council last year. This slide also shows the location of the senior center and the aquatic center, and again, the backbone infrastructure, the roads that were approved with the tentative map back in 2019. This next area, this is the arena location that was approved in February by the Planning Commission. And so that backbone infrastructure will be built prior to the arena opening, and a number of these things are overlapping each other out there with the improvement plan, items moving forward and individual project items moving forward and being reviewed by staff right now. The next item that was approved in conjunction with the arena is the Park One Aquatic and Arena Parking Joint Use Parking Lot area that we had shown of the Arena project. That'll be reviewed by staff going forward. And then again, that area I just highlighted is part of the SoCal Soccer Complex parking. What's happening here? Let me catch back up to this. Okay, and this is the SoCal Soccer Complex parking lot that I was talking about. We talked about that when we had the Arena project in front of you, and it shows the conceptual location, the promenade through there, kind of through the central portion of the parking lot. Again, I'm showing these things to show how these areas connect and how some of the pedestrian spaces and connections are created through the access areas and pedestrian walkways and spaces that'll be located adjacent to each other. Another key component of this, remember with the Arena project in that lower southwest corner is the 36,000-square-foot plaza area, pedestrian plaza that's in that space. It's a key component, you know, it's a node inside the park providing connections to all these areas. And then here is the mixed-use project that's in front of you tonight. That's the location. I think that really helps to show how it's fitting in with these surrounding areas. To the south, those are the future commercial areas. That's the Oceanside Boulevard Commercial District that's identified in a specific plan, and Sudbury is the master developer of that area as well. That'll be coming sometime in the future. And then finally, and not necessarily in this order, but the area I just highlighted at the top is the future location of Park One. It's designated as a larger area, but with the SoCal Soccer Complex in there, we talked about that at the Arena hearing. There'll be some coordination on how those land use areas are actually developed, but that's the area that Park One could be in right now, in that area. So showing how that ties in, and I understand that's moving ahead, maybe sooner than later with the city, not necessarily after those commercial areas come in. It's just kind of the order I highlighted in tonight. So this final picture, I hope gives a real good sense of the composite of El Corazon and this area of El Corazon and how the park space is starting to tie in, how the mixed-use site is really connected into these other areas and will connect into the remainder, or remaining areas of the park as the other park areas are developed in El Corazon. This is an illustrative of the site plan that Richard had shown you, but again, this shows the layout, north pointing to the left-hand side of your drawing, Village Commercial Drive out in front. Again, the mixed-use buildings are located on either side of the entry drive, along Village Commercial Drive frontage. Significant amount of landscaping and pedestrian amenities within this project, including sales and landscape areas and the small plaza spaces out in front of the mixed-use commercial buildings. This is the graphic Richard is showing you as well, just showing the variations in building sizes. There's seven-plex, 12-plex, and 14-plex buildings within this complex. There's seven-plex, 12-plex, and 14-plex buildings within this complex. Again, here's some of the architectural slides I wanted to walk through. Richard showed you a few of these. One of the comments we did have at the advisory committee and stemming from discussion with Friends of El Corazon, some concerns about some of the look of the mixed-use buildings and, to their credit, Sudbury Development, after the advisory committee meeting met with Friends of El Corazon, and is proposing some minor adjustments to the buildings architecturally, not to the footprints, not to anything that staff really has reviewed, but some things that they feel make the project better. I know Friends of El Corazon has looked at these and, I think, endorsed them, and that's what Sudbury will be proceeding with. These are actually kind of original elevations, and they changed them slightly, but these have a little bit deeper arch recesses where you see the arched entryways, and some of the vertical members have more relief and are a little bit deeper than what was on the plans we had in front of the advisory committee. And this is a corner view of that perspective. Both commercial or both mixed-use buildings are very, are similar, almost identical in architecture on either side of that entryway. And just conceptually, that space out front would be where there's some flexible plaza space. Again, this is from the other side of that. And so you can see that vertical element is kind of a deeper element that rises up along the wall plane facing to the arch areas. And as Richard had mentioned, again, obviously, this is the contemporary take on the Gill design aesthetic with clean lines and simple forms, lots of layered planes, the arch elements, canopy elements over the windows and so forth. And it'll really tie in nicely with the Aquatic Center and the Senior Center that's already there. Here's a close-up of the entry of the commercial building, the canopy element over that. Then here's, it may be a little hard to see, here's a comparison of kind of our previous elevations are on the left-hand side, and the ones I just showed you are on the right-hand side. And you can see the depth of those architectural elements and those arch areas are a little bit more prominent on the right-hand side drawings. And those are, I think, very consistent with the plans that you saw and that staff has reviewed, and so Sudbury will make those minor changes on their final development plans that come forward. So that's my presentation. Happy to answer any questions. For you.
Thank you, Dan.
Appreciate your time.
Vice Chair Obama.
Thank you. Dan, what kind of commercial do you think would be viable for those spaces? What are you guys thinking as far as it might activate in those spots?
Yeah, and that question came up at the advisory hearing, and you know, it's really, you know, Sudbury works with a lot of, they do a lot of commercial development and work with a lot of opportunities on that. It's not real clear right now what might go in there. It's a very challenging space to activate. The Ventana project has the same situation with two small commercial buildings that are separate buildings out along the frontage, and I don't know that anything's in there right now either, but the spaces are available. And I would think if there's more activity in the arena and more population, there's certainly a stronger opportunity to populate those spaces. And I don't know if anybody from Sudbury would like to jump in on that question, but I think that's pretty consistent with what we talked about before.
Good question. Any other questions for Dan from the commissioners? Commissioner Reins?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As far as, I just want to thank the city staff, really good presentation, and also the presenter, excellent presentation. I'm a big fan of the mixed-use type of developments. I think it kind of accomplishes what we're going for as far as using our land appropriately. My question probably, I have two questions for the commercial area specifically. As far as like, how many, can you estimate how many jobs this will generate, either part-time or full-time? And then as far as the commercial area goes, how much tax revenue can you estimate the city will collect?
Yeah, I appreciate those questions. I don't have specific answers on either of those. They're very small spaces, at 4,700 square feet total. They could lend themselves to retail, a number of retail and business uses and office uses, and that's, you know, roughly a little over 2,300 square feet in either space. And then if anyone from Sudbury wants to hop on, if you have any further development and economic information, as was asked, feel free.
This is Colton Cedric, can you hear me?
Yes, Colton, go ahead.
So that's a very good question. In fact, Kyra Marson is doing a study as we speak that's going to be going before City Council on March 6th, when the, or 5th, excuse me, when the documents go forward for the purchase and sale agreement. And I saw a draft of the Kyra Marson study, but I don't have it with me, so I don't know, I don't recall what the numbers were to the questions you just asked, but we do have that information that can be provided to you, but it'll have to happen after this hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Colton. Any other questions for Dan or the applicant? Don't see any right now. Thanks, Dan.
Okay, thank you.
So, public hearing, city planner, any slips?
Mr. Chairman, we have three speakers, and Scott will handle that part of the hearing.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Our first speaker is Joan Bachman, and the next speaker on deck will be Diane Nygaard. Joanne, you're on board.
Yes. Thank you for hearing us speak, commissioners. Friends of El Corazon supports the specific plan of El Corazon, and this apartment development meets those requirements. We are, we don't have any problem with the retaining walls, which is the only part that requires discretionary. So we, the purpose of Friends of El Corazon is to support the specific plan and is to ensure the development of our park. So we're happy to see the continued use of Irving Gill-inspired architecture. It creates the look and feel of El Corazon Park. Right now, we're focused on the pedestrian connections through our park. We're looking forward to the implementation of the promenade between the Arena and the SoCal Sports Fields, along with the continued street planting in the parkways. We're still missing our street trees in front of Ventana, and we continue to press the city on that. We will continue to press the city and developers on the issues of park funding, parkland designation, transportation demand management, greenhouse gas reduction, and better ways to manage the land over time. So we look forward to the many changes coming to El Corazon over the next year, but we're clearly aiming for a forever park. So 100 years from now, we're thinking the decisions made now better be a good park over time. So any short-term thinking in finances or goals really will not do. So we do support this project, and we are working on the bigger issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Thank you. Next speaker is Diane Nygaard, and the speaker on deck will be Christopher Allen. Diane, you're on.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, Diane Nygaard, also with Friends of El Corazon. We very much appreciate that Sudbury has committed to stay within the limits of residential units from the time they were awarded the development agreement all the way through this proposal tonight. They've been very responsive to community input. That doesn't mean we've always agreed 100% on the detail, but we very much appreciate their consideration of our input and responsiveness to community concerns. But our only real concern with this project is really not on the developer, it's our city and how our city has been looking at what we think is a really critical element of this that Joan mentioned, and that's the pedestrian connections between all these locations. Right now, we've got all these disparate locations on site, from the Ventana condos and a little commercial there, to the SoCal Sports Fields, the new swimming center that's coming online, this development, the Arena, with no clear pedestrian connections between them that create a sense of place, a sense that we're in a park, a sense that it's a vibrant, special place that makes you want to explore what else is on site and that will help make these small commercial sites more viable. So we think those pedestrian connections are essential to really implement the concept of the park, and we would ask that you direct, that you make your comments that you fully support, making that happen some way, some way before all of these, we keep moving piecemeal forward with these projects, and we don't have a connection between them. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. And Mr. Allen?
Last speaker is Christopher Allen.
Yes, my name is Christopher Allen. I'm with the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. I would like to bring up that in, with Sudbury Properties in the residential mixed-use, there's been serious allegations of worker exploitation, and I would urge the board to look into these prior to approval of this project or place some safeguards in order to make sure that workers that are building this mixed-use development are not exploited and that they are able to make a living wage in a secure, safe work environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. That concludes public input. Thank you. Okay, we'll close out the public hearing then and bring it back to the commissioners for discussion. I'll take the cue from Diane Nygaard, and I will at least make mention of our support too, my support, I should say, of making sure that as developments continue in El Corazon, that we do, that we're mindful of the connections between, for pedestrians so that, as Diane put it so elegantly, you have a sense of place as you move from location to location. So it sounds like Diane and Joan are very mindful of that, and they include that in all their discussions as development moves forward, and I'll just say that I support that idea as well. Commissioner Goodkind?
I wonder if we could get even more clarification from staff on that concern specifically regarding the pedestrian connections, given the piecemeal development of El Corazon. What is the plan for, planning for the pedestrian connections? What's, what are the details? Please, thank you.
Brian, can I put you on the spot? So for the record, I've requested Brian Thomas come down and answer that question. He's a city engineer.
Good evening. Brian, is that right?
Good evening. Brian Thomas, city engineer.
Welcome.
Honorable Chair and Commissioners. Yes, we're very mindful of that question. How do we continue to make a piecemeal project cohesive? That is one of the things we've been working very closely with Sudbury on, to make sure that all elements are coming together so that we do have one cohesive walkway through the area, and not only connecting to the Arena and the mixed-use, but also in connecting to the Ventana project and as well as the Senior Center and the Aquatic Center and everything moving forward. We're very mindful of the pedestrian access. We're also very mindful of the original use for the park, which is bicycles, hiking trails for the people. So these are things that we are working with the developer on to make sure.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions, either for?
Yeah, I have a question. So probably the question is, what's the timeline of these things happening? So I know that this is a piecemeal kind of development. So, and I understand as you develop, you can't put in all these trails because when construction happens, that these get torn up. So I certainly sympathize with the developer in doing those things, but it might be, it might be helpful for the public if there is something that you could publish that kind of shows when these things are going to be developed, because I think if not, it's going to come up every time the developer brings up the next, you know, the next thing they're going to do with the project that's south of them. So you might consider that.
Certainly, Commissioner Morsey, we will work with the applicants to create a master plan of a general schedule.
Thank you.
Right now, we're working with Prop 68 grants to obtain funding for Park Site One, so that if we're successful, we won't hear until late this year, early next year, as to whether or not we got the grant moving forward.
And I think that's good, that communication goes out to everyone, so they know that you're doing a good job.
Appreciate that, and we will work on that, and we will get it published as quickly as we can possibly do so. Thank you.
Thank you. And the master plan was a term I was thinking as you were speaking, Tom. So yeah, it sounds like maybe that grant funding is going to go towards that effort so that the output for that would be a map or some other sort of thing, so people could actually see, here's how they're all going to connect and how I'll be able to walk through this area. Is that accurate?
Well, Chair Rosales, the grant is actually for Park Site One itself. A master plan or a master schedule of the work will have to be something that we do in-house with input from the developer.
Okay. Great, thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners? Thank you, Brian. Appreciate your input.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Vice Chair Obama, would you like to?
I guess if, there are no other questions or communications, then I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve and confirm issuance of a categorical exemption per SEQA guidelines, Article 19, Section 15, 182, and approved development plan, D-190018, and certain exceptions to certain El Corazon specific plan development standards by adopting Planning Commission Resolution Number 2021 P-16, with the findings and conditions of approval attached herein.
Thank you. We have a motion by Vice Chair Obama. A second?
I'll second that motion.
Have a sec. Thank you. Second by Commissioner Custer. Any further discussion? Don't see any. Commissioner Reins?
We vote to approve the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Custer?
Yes.
Commissioner Morsey?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodkind?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes.
Vice Chair Obama?
Yes.
And I too am a yes, city planner.
For the record, we'll record that as seven in favor, zero against. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Tom, I'd just like to do a shout-out to Diana and Joan that have been just watching this development and making sure that in 100 years, that it's going to be a great, it's going to be a good development.
He was giving a shout-out to Diane and to Joan, and yes, we, I think we all welcome and are pleased with their continued engagement. Thanks, Tom. Okay, our last public hearing item is Item Six, is consideration of a development plan and exceptions. I'm sorry, I'm reading number five. Apologies. Let me flip the page. Number six is consideration of an appeal of city planner's approval of administrative development plan and administrative conditional use permit to allow a 50-foot-tall addition of approximately 2,500 square feet of operations. This is the development of the Coastline Baptist Church addition and remodel. The applicant is Coastline Baptist Church. The architect is Pickle Group. So, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I was trying to deal with logistics.
Want to make sure you are at your seat before we continue. This item was continued, by the way, from March 8th planned Planning Commission meeting. Disclosures, Commissioner Custer?
Read the report, drove by the site, and read the email.
Thank you. Commissioner Morsey?
Same.
Vice Chair Obama?
The same.
Commissioner Hayes?
Same.
Commissioner Goodkind?
Yes, I actually am involved in a sale of an Oceana home within 500 feet of the site and have many clients in Oceana who feel strongly about this project, so I am going to recuse on this one. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that disclosure. And Commissioner Reins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm familiar with the area. I read the corresponding emails and read staff report.
Great, thank you. My disclosures are the same. With that, we will, good evening. Veronica, how are you?
I'm good.
We'll turn to you for your presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Rosales. Good evening, Commissioners, and welcome to the city's two new planning commissioners this evening. My name is Veronica Marones, a planning consultant, and I'll be presenting item number six to you this evening. So situated within the Ocean, Oceana Neighborhood Planning Area, the project site is located at 557 Vista Bella, just east of El Camino Real. The site has a general plan land use designation of general commercial and a zoning designation of limited commercial. Surrounding land uses include commercial office and service station to the north, multifamily residential to the east and south, and a green belt to the west. This table outlines the permit history of the project site. The religious facility was initially approved in 2005. The original entitlement allowed for the conversion of a portion of the existing commercial space into the religious facility use, and a 20% into the commercial space and reciprocal parking agreement with 503 Vista Bella, the commercial lot adjacent to the north. The current application includes a request to expand the religious facility into the remainder of the commercial center, interior and exterior remodel of the larger building, a 2,499 square foot addition of lobby space to the assembly area of the church, as well as exterior remodeling of the site, including minor changes to landscaping and parking. The proposed expansion would entail larger areas for youth programming and a 50-foot-tall facade at the area of addition. It should be noted that there appears to be some confusion surrounding the proposed project due to a recent developers' conference that was submitted to the Planning Division for preliminary feedback. On March 24, a developers' conference item consisting of both the 557 Vista Bella and 503 Vista Bella properties was evaluated for preliminary mixed-use development. That proposal, which is not a formal entitlement application, is not a part of the proposed project or this appeal. The project site is developed with an existing commercial center consisting of two buildings. The northern building, as shown on the top figure in this slide, is where the expansion of addition is proposed. Expansion and addition are proposed. The area in red shows the proposed area of expansion of the use. The area in green shows the area of proposed remodeling of the existing auditorium and assembly area, and the area in yellow is the location of the proposed 50-foot expand, addition, excuse me. The southern building proposes no changes to the interior or building square footage. This is the proposed site plan for the project with the area of addition outlined in red. Areas in gray are outside of the scope of work. Here is the proposed 50-foot-tall exterior addition and general remodeling of the northern building on site. There's a little key indicator in the top right corner of these exterior slides. This is the south-facing elevation of the assembly area with proposed addition. This is the east-facing elevation, elevation of the assembly space with the 50-foot-tall addition in the background. This is the north-facing elevation of the assembly space. And lastly, this is the area of proposed expansion into the existing commercial center, which includes exterior remodeling. The proposed interior changes include remodeling of the approximate 10,000-square-foot auditorium, allowing for the interior seating area to accommodate 660 seats for religious services, and interior remodeling of the 2,600-square-foot multipurpose room. The area of addition is again shown in red. The religious facility use would expand into the existing vacant commercial space, resulting in an approximate 16,000-square-foot expansion. This area would be primarily for youth and would be limited to operations concurrent with church services, as outlined in Attachment 5 of the staff report. The appellant's appeal letter outlined nine issues. Issue number one is shown here and expresses concerns that the proposed area of addition would impact ocean breezes, which would in turn impact the residences to the east. The appellant did not provide substantial evidence for this issue. City does not regulate ocean breezes throughout the city. The project was reviewed by the Application Review Committee for consistency with applicable codes and policies. Further, the proposed project complies with the city's height limits or the limited commercial zone. Issue number two contends the proposed addition would impede private views of the residences to the east. Again, the applicant did not provide substantial evidence for this issue. City does not protect private views and does not have a private view preservation ordinance. As noted on issue one, the project was reviewed by staff and conforms to the allowed maximum height for the zone. The appellant asserts that additional parking is needed for the proposed project and that a traffic study is needed. They also state the parking, that parking during service is an issue because on-street parking is limited during those hours. However, the appellant did not provide substantial evidence for this issue. The proposed project complies with the city's parking regulations as outlined in Article 31. The project site has an existing CUP for a 20% parking reduction and an off-site parking agreement with 503 Vista Bella. It should be noted that the project's parking demands are satisfied by the parking on-site and that 503 Vista Bella property would provide a surplus of parking to the use. City staff, including traffic engineering, reviewed the project for compliance with city requirements and determined a parking city was not required pursuant to city guidelines. The project site is surrounded by public streets with on-street parking. Except in the downtown area of the city, the Planning Division does not evaluate existing on-street parking as a part of the project's parking assessment, and it does not count toward a private development's parking supply. The Planning Division does not regulate who is able to park in available public street parking. Appeal issue four states the conversion of the existing commercial center to religious facility would adversely impact the homeowners of the adjacent residences due to the elimination of local commercial services. The appellant did not provide substantial evidence for this issue. The project site is subject to the limited commercial zoning designation, and no special restrictions exist for the site. Further, it should be noted that granting this, the requested entitlements would not prohibit commercial uses from the site in the future. Issue number five asserts that no requests for input regarding the project site's acquisition by the applicant was solicited. City does not regulate noticing or outreach for sales of private property within the city boundaries. Records indicate the applicant acquired the site in 2003, 17 years prior to the submission of this application, and has had two prior entitlements approved during that time by Planning Commission. Appeal issue number six contends the city staff did not provide adequate noticing for the proposed project, questions the intent of city staff regarding the notification mailing, and states that COVID-19 pandemic created difficulty for people to meet regarding the project. City staff followed all notification requirements. City maintains City Council Policy 300-14, which provides advanced notification standards. Staff followed all noticing requirements for the proposed project outlined in this city policy. This requires a notice being mailed out a minimum of 15 days in advance of the decision date. Notices were mailed out on Monday, December 21, 15 days prior to the date of decision. In addition, the notice of the proposed project was published in the San Diego Union Tribune on December 21, 15 days prior to the date of decision. And finally, Policy 300-14 also requires that a notice of application be sent within the first 14 days of an application's submission. The notice of this application was mailed on March 12, 2020, and was sent to the same notification list as that which received the notice of intent to take action. Issue number seven, the appellant claims false advertising occurred because the project notification materials did not include a picture. The Planning Division does not include project renderings, plans, or photographs in any notification mailers or newspaper publishing. Notices mailed do provide information on how to access project plans and documents, as well as contact information for the project planner of record. This information is located on all three, on all three forms. Can you all hear me if I continue through that? Okay.
Okay. Sorry. Maybe not. Seems to be mocking you.
Okay.
I think. We need you back for a show that you want. It sounds like the cannon. I'm not going to say anything. Go ahead, Veronica.
So, this information is located on all three forms of noticing that occurred for the proposed project, the notice of application, newspaper, and notice of intent to take action. That information is contact information for the planner of record.
Maybe if you pound on the wall.
We're going to take a five-minute break.
Continue after we get it quieted out.
But I think we're good to pick up where you left off?
No problem. So, the last point on issue number seven is that the materials were posted online for viewing, including project plans. So, appeal issue number eight is a request by the appellant to form a new policy that takes into account the people who live in the area of a project that may be affected by that project. The appellant's request for a new policy is outside the scope of the proposed project. It does not entail, or I'm sorry, the proposed project entails an addition, expansion, and interior/exterior remodeling of an existing religious facility. No policy changes are proposed as a part of this project, and even if a policy was adopted, it would not be applied retroactively to the project. Finally, the last claim involves the presence of 20 cell towers on site, which could cause incompatibility issues with nearby residences. However, the appellant did not provide substantial evidence for this issue. Existing wireless communication facilities are present on site and were approved through the conditional use permit process at the previous date. No wireless communication facilities are a part of the proposed project. So, staff received several comments related to the appeal, which were sent to the planning commissioners via email. And with that, staff recommends the Planning Commission, by motion, confirm issuance of a Class 1 categorical exemption and uphold the city planner's approval of the project by adopting the resolution, draft resolution. And that concludes staff presentation. I'm available for questions. The applicant's team is available via Zoom, and the appellant is here in person. And I believe the appellant has prepared some materials.
Okay. We'll go to the applicant. Any questions for staff before we go to the applicant? Commissioner Rains, any question for Veronica?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks. So, you said the applicant's team is here via Zoom. Do we want to? Well, let me ask the applicant, would you like to do a presentation or just be available for questions?
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. This is Jessica Steiner with Pickle Group Architecture. We are the applicant on the project. We have no presentation. We thank Veronica and the team for all their help, and we're available for any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant, representative? Yes, go ahead.
I have one quick question. How many seats do they currently have in the facility?
For that, I would like to hand it over to Jonathan Tellis, who's representing the church. He will know that number far better than I.
We currently have, due to COVID, reduced seating, pre-COVID, it was about 350.
And how many parking spaces were required for the 350?
Maybe it's a question for Veronica?
Yes. Commissioner Hayes, under the previous entitlements, the assembly space was not fixed seating, so it was parked at square footage. Our zoning ordinance breaks down religious facility parking based on either seats, at 1 to 4 seats, or square footage, 1 to 40 square feet. The previous entitlement parked it at 1 to 40 square feet, and I believe, I don't have that number off the top of my head, on parking requirements for the previous seating.
That makes it difficult for us to figure out the one particular appeal issue that came up with parking. And I know we're meeting code, but I'm concerned about parking demand and the impact it might have on the area.
City Planner, Jeff, do you have anything on the parking that you could help walk us
I believe the staff report analyzed parking, and as I understand it, it meets code?
Correct. The information that staff doesn't have at the ready is what the previous parking entitlements required at the 1 to 40 square footage rate. I know it was more than what is currently required based on the seating rate.
So, it's the previous entitlement?
Correct.
And then there was a second entitlement that came along?
Mm-hmm.
And then we analyzed it under that entitlement?
So, we have analyzed this under the third iteration of entitlement for this site. Based on the current entitlement, the proposed project meets parking, and the current site has two parking modifications that were previously entitled as a part of the conditional use permit process. The first was a 20% parking reduction, which is based on the original entitlement parking standards, and as you'll see in Attachment 4, outlined a 22-parking-spot waiver, essentially. And then the second entitlement processed included a reciprocal parking agreement with 503 Vista Bella, which is the adjacent property to the north, provided a surplus of parking, surplus of parking. So, under this entitlement, based on what they are proposing, the project site has adequate parking based on the city's, the current zoning ordinance, and the 503 Vista Bella property provides a surplus of parking to the site. They are overparked. I'm sorry. Underparked. Overparked.
I think what, let me put this maybe in simpler terms. They had 310 seats. Now, they're going up to 660 seats, so they're essentially doubling more than doubling the amount of seats they have. So, are they doubling the amount of parking that they have?
No, they are not.
So, do we know if there's actually an existing overspill problem that's already happening in the residential area adjacent, and is that going to be exacerbated?
That is not substantiated by any evidence. So, based on what staff reviewed, the project complies with the required parking for the zone and for the use, but there isn't anything that's been provided by the appellant that shows there is a substantial issue with the parking.
And I think that's where I would have a concern, unless there was a detailed survey done on a Sunday to see what type of an issue we might currently have, so that we'd understand if approval of this would actually create an even worse problem on the community or for the community.
Let me, so I can understand, too. It's a good question. Between the existing parking... Between the existing parking onsite and the offsite parking, are they going to meet the standards required for this project moving forward?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I might suggest that you ask the applicant what they believe is if necessary parking. Quite often our applicants have done some kind of analysis. Most applicants I know don't want to underpark their projects.
Yeah. The only other, I think caveat or amendment to my comment is if there's an offsite parking agreement with a different entity, private or whatever, how assured are we, or the applicant in this case, that that is a long-term solution versus just over the next five years or something like that?
The offsite parking, reciprocal parking is recorded against both properties. So it is, unless, and the city of Oceanside is a party to that agreement. So unless we explicitly allow for that restriction to be lifted from the project sites, it's required and a part of the title for the property.
So it's recorded with the property, okay.
And I would just like to note that this is an existing commercial shopping center. So at the time of the last project application, it was not just the church use onsite, there was a restaurant and other commercial uses. And that's what the church is proposing to expand into. So those commercial uses with their required parking will no longer be present onsite.
Understood.
Okay. Commissioner Hayes, anything else or? You can mull it over and come back again if you'd like.
I would really like to see a parking utilization study done on a Sunday to, once COVID is over, to understand what the real demand is out there. So I am really concerned about approving this without understanding what kind of a problem we might be creating for Oceana.
Mr. Chairman, I'd caution the commission not to start deliberating before we've even heard the appellant.
Agreed. Okay, thank you Veronica. The applicant is available for questions, but it sounds like they don't have a formal presentation. So are we going to the public or just the appellant in this case, or both?
The standard procedure would be the appellant has up to 20 minutes total, including a rebuttal. Same as the applicant. And then we would open it up to public testimony and individuals would have three minutes each.
Great, thank you.
Then you would go back to the applicant for rebuttal and then the appellant for rebuttal.
The appellant then is present, I understand, in chambers? Correct?
The appellant is present in chambers, the applicant via Zoom.
The appellant then, if you would like to come forward and present or address the, go ahead, address the commission? State your name for the record.
Let me get the material.
And you said 20 minutes, City Planner? Okay.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank the planning.
Ma'am, if you could, give us your name for the record, yeah, and speak into the mic.
My name is Eileen Pasta. And what else did you want to know?
Just stand in front of the mic like you're doing. Thank you.
Okay. I want to thank the planning commission for allowing me, and the city employees for allowing me to state my concerns. First of all, I want to say that the Coastline Baptist Church does a lot for their parishioners because they affirm their belief in God, they provide spiritual and emotional support and mutual help on their journey. I see the Coastline Baptist Church as a church, in the normal sense of the word, a Bible study, and establishing a wholesome community. I can believe that the Coastline Church wants to reach to the heavens to express its wonderful presence, especially during these trying times. However, Coastline is seeking to increase in roof height to 50 feet and a building expansion of 2,499 square feet of floor space leading into the current auditorium. The total addition will make for a space of 12,731 square feet for 660 seats. You got the balloon? Raising the roof to 50 feet maximum, which is the maximum allowed, does nothing to increase or decrease Coastline's desired seating area. The application itself states that the increase to 50 feet is merely decorative. It is meant to enhance the appearance of the building. The city received public comments conveying concerns about the impediments of private views for homeowners located to the east. The city's response is it does not maintain or regulate private views. My belief, neither city nor church realize the many damaging effects that are going to happen. Does the church realize the effects of this decorative request? Some property values in Oceana are going to be decreased. They won't have a view of the ocean anymore and the people living in their homes will lose the enjoyment of the views that they did have. The 50-foot height will block onshore breezes. No cooling of their homes will cause physical problems because seniors are adversely affected by the heat. I did check with the Army Corps of Engineers Architectural Department and they asserted that from the architectural viewpoint, a 50-foot tower in front of the houses would block the breezes. They didn't give me a letter because they don't want to represent the Army Corps of Engineers, but it was a very reliable source. And other local architects were asked by Oceana citizens and they said the same thing. It's going to cause financial problems because those houses affected are going to have to purchase air conditioning because all of them don't have air conditioning. And that's going to increase on a permanent basis their utility costs. It's going to cause ecological problems because the increased energy use for air conditioning is going to be considerable. The negative, oh, the negative, that one. Okay. Used to work, Disney does balloon tests, look at the height.
Pam, if you could make sure you speak into the mic, I know you're trying to get your...
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
As you can see, what my husband did was he has 50 feet of fishing line and he attached exactly 50 feet of fishing line to the balloon. So this decorative tower is, where'd it go? Oh.
We lost our balloon. How much for cross?
Well, you can see, Bob, would you please do the picture? You can see that the balloon, there, there's the picture of the current church. Now, when the balloon on the first picture there to the left, it was at a slant, so it wasn't at its highest point. We were having a little bit of trouble because there is an onshore breeze. The second one, the balloon is higher and you can see it's way above the palm tree. Go back to the church palm. So look at the palm tree by the balloon, look at the height of the church and see where that tower is going to reach. Now turn around, the house, turn around and look at the house across the street and the balloon shows where the 50-foot tower is in relation to the house across the street. So it's very easy to see that the views will be blocked certainly, but the onshore breezes will also. And it's only for decorative purposes, it's not for anything necessary. The negative results are physical, emotional, financial, and ecological. The decorative effects are impressive, but the choice by the church in the city leads me to believe that neither has any concern for this Oceanside senior citizens. I would like to suggest a roof height of 30 feet going to 22 feet. Still impressive, but the change in the structure would create an atmosphere that's homey, comfortable, and accepting of an individual, not entering a sterile museum-like building. The physical comfort would enable a person to pray more easily and enter into the spirit of the service as a participant rather than a spectator. I'd like to suggest a discussion between Coastline and Oceana to determine a mutually acceptable decision. This project is categorically exempt. It does not need an environmental determination or environmental impact report. The reason is because it's 2,499 square feet. That doesn't need an environmental report. However, 2,500 square feet needs an environmental report. It's one square foot difference. And you can just picture how small one square foot is. It would be prudent to conduct the environmental report and eliminate the possibility of a negative impact or problem after completion. How would the problem be solved at this point after it's done? It's also categorically exempt because it's a negligible expansion of an existing religious facility. Coastline's application states the proposed expansion would convert approximately 16,642 square feet of existing commercial tenant space located in the northern building that's not currently part of the church use into additional multipurpose and educational space for the church. This is not an expansion of an existing religious facility as the expansion is a conversion of commercial tenant space. I respectfully ask that the city and the church reconsider the categorical exemption and perform the environmental report and consider the impact on Oceana. The city states the location for the use and conditions under which it will be operated are consistent with the general plan. The city says this will not be a detriment to the public health, safety, or welfare of persons residing or working in or adjacent to the neighborhood and will not be detrimental to properties or improvements in the vicinity. I believe this project is not only a height problem, but a safety issue and a detriment to the Oceanside properties and seniors. Regarding safety, the only entrance to and from Oceana into Camino Real are two streets surrounding the Coastline Church. Streets Vista Oceana and Vista Ray are one block away from each other in distance and the church is the closest to these two streets. Church cars would be, there's 124 parking places allocated for the 660 people. So I'm being generous. Church cars, 100 plus, Oceana cars, 930. So that equals 1,030 cars trying to exit onto two streets. There's no evacuation plans in place through the police department, fire department, city of Oceanside, or Oceana homeowners. In case of any emergency, Coastline would be the first access to the only exit area. The church parishioners would be the first to get to safety. During the Lilac Fire, a lot of people took three hours to get out of the danger area. So I'd like to suggest a coordinated safety plan between the Coastline Baptist Church, the city of Oceanside, and Oceana. And this could produce good community relations and innovative plans for safety and traffic concerns. You want me to do the last one or not?
Yes, we added 10 more minutes, you had gone through 10 minutes already, so you still have 10 left.
The city findings state the benefit to the community because they will update the design of the existing commercial center and improve the street appeal. And that's the benefit of this project. I fail to see how an updated design and improving street appeal are benefits to Oceana residents who have now lost the stores behind their new, updated, and appealing facades. Senior citizens utilized, and I don't have proof of this, but if you go up there, everybody misses grandma's. Senior citizens utilized grandma's restaurant and meeting rooms on a regular basis. The chiropractor, who is old, doesn't need a chiropractor. Pet grooming, Oceana real estate, others are sorely missed and they're not easily replaced. Seniors enjoyed the necessary services close to home and it gave them safety because they didn't have to travel into the city, especially the widows who now live alone. The Coastline Baptist Church's mission statement might be helping one another trade a checklist faith, that's where you just check everything off, for a real life with Jesus. Jesus said, "Love your neighbor as yourself." Coastline can make their mission known through their actions in our community by becoming a support and resource for seniors in need. Oceana seniors can surprise Coastline with their many talents and gifts. Both will find joy in this new relationship. And I'd like to apologize for not supplying certified proof, but I did know it was 124 parking places and you saw the pictures, the two streets all close together. There is no plan for Oceana to exit onto Camino Real. That's one block wide, two streets that are one block down to Camino Real. It's really dangerous. And the church is right there at the top of both streets. The other thing with the application, we received it on New Year's Eve. That was Friday. Monday was a holiday. That gave me two days to get the signatures on the petition. I wasn't the only one to receive it on New Year's Eve. Everyone did. So I apologize Veronica, but I disagree with that. And there were other things she said that I disagreed with too, but do you have any questions?
We don't, we're not going to do a question and answer session. We take your testimony and you'll have a chance to have a rebuttal. I'm going to ask the applicant at this point if they'd like to rebut any comments that you made and you'll be afforded the same opportunity.
You did notice the height of the balloon in relation to the houses and...
Balloon is, yes, thank you.
I apologize wherever.
Don't worry about it. Come down.
I mean, we still have three other speakers.
Okay. You want to call them out?
So our first public speaker is Georgetta Falesz and the person on deck will be Linda Wood, which is in person. So Georgetta, you're free to speak.
Thank you. I would like to thank the planning commission for the opportunity to share some thoughts regarding the Coastline project. Generally speaking, Coastline Baptist Church is viewed as a safe and secure neighbor for the senior citizens who live in the adjacent Oceana community. Although the zoning designations are different for both, at one point an harmonious and workable relationship had been established between the two. I have noticed that Coastline does have members who serve to direct vehicles during high traffic times. In my experience, they have been courteous and have let the Oceana residents proceed and not wait on exit traffic from the Coastline services. With a projected increase in membership and vehicles, it would be important that this procedure continues. Recently, however, all the businesses that had been support resources for the Oceana residents, such as Grandma's Restaurant and the Chiropractor, were moved out. Although Coastline can provide spiritual support for Oceana residents, the resources to meet physical, social, and other general welfare needs are now lacking. Drawing on my many years of experience visiting seniors in various facilities in the Central Valley, I would like to share an example of how one faith-based organization there supports and meets the needs in their community. Included as part of one church campus is an independent residence for seniors. The gated facility includes nearly 100 cottages and apartments situated adjacent to the campus. The purpose behind this project is to provide a safe and secure environment at an affordable living rate for seniors from the church and the community. The adjacent office building here on Vista Bella would be an ideal location for such a facility. In addition, there is a coffee shop on the campus that is open even when sanctuary worship services are not being held. This provides a place where church members, senior residents, and others in the community gather to socialize. This is especially important for those who are struggling with loneliness. There is also a senior SAC program that partners with local food banks to receive bulk food deliveries for seniors to come and receive groceries free of charge. deliveries for seniors to come and receive groceries free of charge twice a month. These are just a few of the many services offered on the campus of this One Church organization. I believe the residents of Oceana would be supportive of the Coastline project, knowing that it does have plans to provide the needed resources that are now lacking for the seniors in the Oceana and Oceanside community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is an in-person speaker. It's Linda Wood, and the person in on deck will be Lynn Schnitzenbach. Linda?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts and views on this expansion of the North Coast, North, I'm sorry, Coastline Baptist Church. I live right across the street. I have a beautiful view of the parking lot and the church facility, and it's crowded. When they start, I mean, I've realized that they haven't done the traffic issue or the traffic surveys, but I mean, on Sunday mornings, and we're, we're coming out of COVID, so we haven't seen the traffic that's going to, that's going to start happening once everything opens up and they can start going to church. And I think the traffic's an issue. It's, they've already kicked out the businesses that were in there, so like, like several of the other speakers have said, we've, we've lost resources. So, I mean, that's kind of, I don't have anything new to add to it other than, you know, it's just, I, I do think that this is not a good bit for the senior citizens in Oceana. They're not all my age. Some of them are, most of them are older, and as we get older, we, we have more trouble, you know, driving, and the increased traffic's not going to be very safe for us. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Our last speaker is Lynn Schnitzenbach.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Schneiderbach. It's a hard name to say. I'm very new to Oceana. I moved in Halloween of 2020. Some of the initial, I'm sure the initial notices probably went to the previous owner, and it was by, by chance that I was informed about this, knew nothing about it. I was still unpacking boxes. I moved from the beach, South Pacific Street, to Oceana for some peace and quiet because it was getting pretty crazy downtown. I belong to an existing church that has been here in the city for, I think, 70 years now, and I realize that there's a need for just spiritual enrichment, especially now. I also have been part of a church that started very small 20 years ago here in a middle school gymnasium, moved to a business park where we were not obstructing traffic and things like that, and they eventually built a huge church that still is in existence today. Oceana's been here for a long time. I'm sure that the, this project knew about that, and I just, I'm shocked, and I know a little bit more just by the appellant. But in the short term, I consider any additional construction to be, and I also, I see the church, I hear their worship team practicing, I hear the kids running around, and I'm all good with, with that because I believe in the same spiritual beliefs. However, I'm worrying about noise, dirt, I have asthma, dust, disruption for a period of time. This doesn't happen in a minute. And we already have some disruption of the traffic, and I do agree that with 932 homes in Oceana existing, and all of us are getting a little bit older, and our, our reflexes may not be as great, I worry about that. I also do know for a fact, as I walk my dog, that there are church members that are parking in the commercial building that is off of Vista Ray and Vista Bella already, and I worry very much about the parking issue in the future. Personally, we lose, in my little pod, we lose view, we lose breeze, and we may lose ingress and egress because of additional parking needs on the street. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Okay, procedurally, we are going to the applicant for a rebuttal?
That's correct, and I don't believe the applicant used much of their time at all, so they would have up to 20 minutes to rebut.
Okay.
Not obligated to use your 20 minutes.
Okay. Applicant, you have up to 20 minutes or nearly 20 minutes for rebuttal on any of the comments that you heard, so your time if you so desire.
Thank you, everyone, and I'm actually going to hand the mic digitally over to John Tellis from the church. He would like to respond to some of those comments first.
Good evening, commissioners. This is John Tellis. The issue that I'd like to address that's been raised was the parking, and the original seating that we were approved at is 444 seats, and at the time that we were approved for that seating, about, and I'm going to guess that the, the whole north side of the property was still commercial, and therefore, we had to share the commercial property parking with the church parking. And so when we were approved back in 2005 or 2008, the parking was, at that time, approved for 444 seats. With no, with this particular project now, we're raising the seating up to 660, but we have also going to utilize all of the parking spaces on site. There are currently 201 site spaces, parking spaces on site. With the property at 503, we pick up an additional 43 parking spaces. Through this project, we're going to lose a few spots, and our, our total number of spaces on site will be 194. And it's my understanding, Veronica can correct me, but it's my understanding that 194 is sufficient to meet the seating capacity that our project is proposing, and we also have the additional 43 sites, parking spaces at the 503 property just next door to us. So I know there's a lot of concern about parking, but we anticipate that the parking that we have is sufficient to cover the services that we have and meet all of the parking needs that the city is, is requesting. That's all I have at this time to address. If there's something else that comes up, I'm available to answer any questions, or we can ask any of the other team members.
Thank you, Mr. Tellis. There were some comments related to the 50-foot addition to the building, and that addition would obstruct views and/or would interfere with breezes in the area. Do you want to address that at all?
I don't have anything to, to address. Those are really personal comments that I can see that are very dear to the appellant and to members of the community, and we certainly understand what they're saying. When we put this project forward, we set out to just try to let the community know that we're a church. We want to have a cross on the, on the top of the building, and, and the architect developed, came back with the proposal that we have in place, so that's how we arrived at the 50-foot.
I can add to that, too. This is Jessica Steiner again. To be clear, and to John's point, yeah, the intent was always to stay within the limitations of zoning code and working to have staff support on what we were doing, but also, the 50-foot is truly just the max height. It's, on the elevations, you can see it's a, it's a peak of an architectural facade element. We specifically did not push the volume of the full auditorium space up to be 50 feet all the way around because we didn't want to create a huge, huge, heavy volume that, you know, overshadow, overshadows everything in the neighborhood. As to the comments on breezes, I'm by no means a meteorologist or whoever be an expert in wind patterns, but by minimizing, the impact actually goes up to 50 feet. I'm very confident it should not adversely affect anyone's climate at their home.
Okay, thank you. City Planner, then procedurally, the app, the appellant has opportunity to come back one more time?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's up to you, but generally speaking, you would give the applicant a chance to rebut, and then the appellant a chance to rebut, and I believe the appellant has approximately eight minutes left.
Okay, so we just heard the applicant. So the appellant, if you would like to come back up and rebut or add anything to the comments, you still have a few minutes left, or you can choose not to. It's your choice. Eight minutes, did you say? About? Okay.
The 50-foot tower is, yes, it does slope, but as you can see, it takes up considerable space. The tower to the left of the 50-foot tower is 14 feet less. It's 36 feet tall. I don't have another balloon, but 36 feet plus 50 feet, and it starts from 50 feet and goes down to, I don't know whether it's 30 or 22, not sure, but it's not space that's needed. The, you can see, you can see the height of the balloon as opposed to, is that your You can see the height of the balloon in relation to the house. That tower is not pencil thin. As far as wind patterns, I used to live in York, Linda. I loved it. We were at the top of a hill. There was valleys and, they built, they changed, I couldn't believe it. They took in earth movers. They changed the configuration, the topography of the land. By the time they were finished and they built the houses, afternoon breezes were gone. No, we didn't live by the beach, but we did have afternoon breezes, and when they changed the topography and they had the houses in direct line, we lost all the cooling effect, and we had to use our air conditioner all the time. Is that scientific? No, but I lived it. I took exception to the cell towers. A number of years ago, the Coastline Baptist Church was going to put in a microwave tower. I looked at the plans and planning, and it showed a danger area that spilled over into the street and the adjoining houses. So I said, you know, you can't have this. This is, the people live there 24 hours. So I had to write to the FCC because you guys can't stop communications. And in doing that, I had a picture, I'm sorry I don't have it, but I had a picture of 19 cell towers. Behind, they have a false roof. They built the false roof to hide the 2019 cell towers. So they are there. I don't lie. I asked for the, the proof from your, your city clerk. I haven't received it yet. I will send it to each of you when I get it because I know it's there. The 2,499 square feet, that doesn't require an environmental report, is one square foot less than that which needs it. Now, this is just a little bit smaller than one square feet, but if they're building into 12,000 square feet for the auditorium and the new space, and they're expanding into the commercial area that was there before, what are the chances that they are going to have this much more space, and it will be the amount required for environmental study? It seems like there's a lot, and the traffic, there is no plan for the safety of the people, and the 124 parking places would equal 124 cars. The extra parking area is next door to the church, still next door to the, one of the only two streets that exits Oceana. So it is basically 124 cars that would be leaving the church area onto Camino Real before the 930 cars that Oceana could leave. So, I mean, there's problems here. They can be worked out, but they should be worked out and not ignored. Anybody want any questions?
No, again, we're not doing a question and answer. We just offer you the opportunity for the rebuttal or additional comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your input. So that concludes our public input, our input from our appellant and the applicant, unless I've missed one of the steps in the process, City Planner. That's it. Thank you.
I believe as appellate, we have, or as applicant, I have an opportunity to respond?
We have some time left for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant does have some time left. Generally speaking, we give the applicant and the appellant one chance at rebuttal. It's up to the chair if you want to give him more time.
Sir, is this Mr. Tellis? If it's something germane to the comments that were just made, if it's a repeat of what we've already heard, then I will not let you have another rebuttal. So is it germane to the information that was just presented again by, or presented by the appellant?
Yes, I'd like to comment on the cell towers.
Okay, go ahead.
When Coastline purchased the property, the cell towers were already in place, and there were only two towers on the property, Sprint and Verizon, and we do not, as the church, we don't put towers. We haven't gone out to put any towers up, so they were there when we bought the property.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that'll conclude all the input we're going to receive this evening, so we'll bring it back to the commission then for comment or deliberation, or perhaps we can go to a comment or a question to the staff as well. Vice Chair Bama, you want to start us off?
I was trying to figure out like parking, and so when you look at the 201 parking stalls that is existing, that's including, I guess, seven ADA, and then you figure out the 660-seat assemblage, which is parked, they say, is, from what I could gather, one space per four seats, so that's 665 parking spaces would be required for that. So if you take the 201 plus the, the joining property that they are going to share reciprocal parking with, that's another, that's another 43. So that brings 79 extra parking places on top of what's required for the assemblage. So I'm sure staff must have analyzed the classrooms, the offices, and everything else on site, and that's 79. From what you said, you're overparked, so I just wanted to make sure, because I know we had some questions from Commissioner Hayes, too, about that, just to, did I get that right when I was trying to figure out my calculations here?
Thank you, Vice Chair, yes. So I apologize, Commissioner Hayes, while I didn't have that information when you initially asked that question. I did review those staff reports prior to this hearing, and upon sitting there, listening, it came to me. So under the last permit application, and to get back to Vice Chair's point, the project required, the religious facility and the commercial center required 225 parking spaces under the last permit. So attachment four, I believe of the staff report, is a parking analysis provided by the applicant's traffic consultant. So this shows that the religious facility would require, under the 660 seats, 165 parking spaces. We also required them to park their storage area at the same time that they are having religious facility uses, so that would total 166 parking spaces needed during assembly services on the weekends. So the site provides 201 parking spaces currently. The proposed project involves the removal of seven parking spaces for a total of 194 on the 557 Vista Bella property. In addition, 43 parking spaces are provided at 503 Vista Bella for a total of 237 parking spaces accessible to the site during the weekend times. During the week, no church services would occur. So under attachment five, there's an operations and management plan... So under attachment five, there's an operations and management plan that outlines how the religious facility would function Monday through Sunday. And the parking demand during the week is a total of 141 parking spaces. So there's a surplus on both the weekend and weekday based on current parking rates in Article 31 of the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Commissioner Hayes?
I think we're getting confused between parking requirement and parking demand, though. So just to ask, so 225 spaces were required when they had 310 seats?
310 seats plus the existing commercial uses that were there at the time.
So the 225 spaces were for all of it?
Correct.
So, and 124 of those were for the 310 seats?
That, I don't know off the top of my head. I think it would be the total square footage that they were proposing at the time by 40. I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know that number off the top.
Figure out what the demand is per space, so we can get some kind of understanding of what the 660 spaces or seats would demand. So if it was 124, I came up with like 2.5, one space for every 2.5 seats.
So I can't speak to the demand as a transportation analyst, but as far as the zoning code iterates, the parking requirement is one space per four seat.
Right. And it's, it's that difference between what the standard is in the code and what the actual demand and impact on the neighborhood is that I have the concern about. So if you take that 2.5 and you look at 660 seats, then you're getting about 264 spaces. And that's, right now, they're proposing 237. So if there's already an existing problem out there, you're adding an additional 27 off-street or off-site parking spaces to the problem. That's my concern.
Thank you.
Where did you get the 2.5?
Take 310 seats and divide it by 225.
But the zoning code for the city is one, one space per four seats. So you're just taking like what they used to have and doing some little math?
I'm trying to figure out the demand and sort of like what the required supply because, and this is just anecdotal. But churches and a lot of what's in our zoning code was, it came about year, you know, 30 years ago, when people used to walk from, from their home to church. They didn't drive to these regional big churches that we're starting to see in our communities. So the parking demand is just different than it was.
The parking demand could be different, but I guess what we have to fall back to, and correct me if I'm wrong, Veronica, is the standard, the parking standard, is what we're sort of obligated to follow, not to disagree with your, your thinking, but is that, is that what we're sort of left you to be able to use and to make a determination if they have enough parking?
That is what staff utilizes, yes. And we, the city's transportation department, traffic engineering, when they evaluate these projects, they do have guidelines that they, for example, for traffic, that they would compare the project against to determine whether it triggers those types of studies. And the same goes for parking with planning, because they are able to park it based on the zoning code. We don't require a parking study unless they're proposing to provide an alternate value of parking or to utilize off-site parking as a part of the project, which even though this project has access to off-site parking, that was done under a separate entitlement previously approved.
Okay, I get it. Commissioner Custer, you had a question?
Well, basically, and maybe we've touched on this a little, they meet the parking requirements by the city, correct?
Correct.
Do we ever customarily dictate that they exceed the requirement? Any establishment? Do we ever say, you cannot, we're not going to pass this unless you exceed the requirement?
I would defer that to City Planner.
No, Chair and Commissioners, I'm not aware off the top of my head. I think perhaps if it was a large enough project where you did an environmental impact report or something like that, perhaps. In this case, again, staff looks at the zoning code. Originally, it was a administrative staff review because of the parameters of the project. And given the fact that it was an existing shopping center, and there was, the argument was made that, well, they're revitalizing or just reusing the existing shopping center. So it's not like a brand-new expansion or something like, so those were the factors that went into it. It is a conditional use permit. It is an appeal. And Barbara can correct me if I'm wrong, but your conditional use permit speaks to adequate public facilities, which includes streets and parking. I don't think it's out of the realm of the planning commission to require a parking study if that's the will of the body or even a traffic study. But again, given, given the staff report and given the information I just gave you, that's, that's why staff, that's how staff came to our recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rains, I can't see you on the screen, so I'll ask, do you have anything that you'd like to address at this point?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, staff and the appellant for their presentations. This is an interesting discussion tonight, actually. It kind of touches on obviously property rights issue, which is what we normally deal with, but also religious freedom. I would like to, and city staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but how an appeal works, from my understanding, is that city staff approves the project, and then the appellant says city staff got it wrong and have to present some type of evidence as to why city staff got it wrong. And from what I've heard, the appellant has failed to do so tonight. They have failed to meet that burden, which is, if we're talking about traffic, parking, if we're talking about wind direction or the like, appellant has presented actually no evidence. In fact, I got a quote from the appellant that says, "I don't have proof of any of this." So I would caution the commissioners to, to engage in what's called burden shifting, is what we call in the legal community, in which we require the applicant to actually provide traffic studies or parking studies. As far as I'm concerned, the appellant has failed to present any evidence, like I had said. And so I think based on the legal standard or the fairness standard, applicant should win. And that's all I have.
Thank you for that.
I have a question. So I'm just trying to get this clear in my mind. So there's, if there's 660 seats divided by four, that's what, 165? So they need 165 parking places, right? And if I got this right, they've got 194 spaces, plus they got an additional 43.
Right. Correct.
Sounds like they've got a lot of party, parking based on our own standards.
Right.
So I don't know where the issue is.
Well, I mean, I don't, Commissioner Hayes, I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but I think we're talking about standard versus actual demand. You know, is, is, do the two link, you know, absolute? Or is one, in this case, demand, the reality of what really is going to happen on a Sunday when COVID's all gone, different than the standard? And I don't know if we can answer that at this point without a parking analysis, without a traffic analysis. So again, we're kind of left to look at what we have in front of us at this point, and that is the existing parking standard, which is one spot per four seats. So that's what we're left at this, at this point.
So if there would be an issue too, it's going to be on a Sunday, correct? And so if they have three services, I would assume they have three services. It's going to be on Sunday, probably at, you know, 8, 9, and 11, or something like that. So I, I don't know. Like Commissioner Rains said, I don't believe, I've heard enough from the appellant to make me vote against staff.
Would you?
I mean, they met all the requirements. The applicant met all their requirements, correct?
Correct.
So, you know, we would be causing them to go above their requirements, above what we, it would sort of be an extra burden on them that we don't put on most projects to cause them to have to do a traffic study or, or a parking study, which at this size is not customary, I believe.
Vice Chair, Ma.
Oh, sorry.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you want to add anything to the comments or?
I do, and I, I appreciate everybody's feedback and discussion with this topic. It is a really big issue that hits communities, and, I mean, it's, it's one I've dealt with over the last 20 years of my career. And when you, when you approve a project without taking a close look about what it's going to do to a neighborhood, churches in particular, especially these big ones, what you end up with is the city ends up with the burden of coming back at some point and implementing something like preferential permit parking districts. And so I, my intent is really for us to try to avoid creating a problem for ourselves that might be minor right now, that the residents have already flagged as a concern, and now we're going to provide even fewer spaces per seat of what's being proposed. So my, I am not trying to put more burden on the developer or the church. I know it's a, it's a good church, it's a popular church, but I'm really trying to prevent an exacerbation of, of an existing problem that might be out there if there's a way that we can prevent it.
If I could ask a question, because you're the professional in that field, would it be more, not appropriate, but would it be, would we get greater value from perhaps tweaking the policies and standards in place and adding triggers or other layers to that standard for the examples like this, that, you know, if we're looking at just the standard, we're looking at the standard, and it doesn't have any flexibility to it? Is that a better way to, to deal with the issue going forward, I guess?
Well, in this case, we know what, it's an existing use, so you could base it on the existing parking utilization. And it's a conditional use permit. So you're conditioning this particular use, you're not putting the same requirement on, say, another church that might come in there and have a much lower congregation and a much lower parking demand. But we know what this one does, we know what it generates right now. So as part of a conditional use permit, I would prefer for us to at least understand what the parking demand is and see if there's some alternatives for providing more parking or carpooling or some other requirements that we could put on the church to try to minimize the impact on the neighborhood.
Got it. Vice Chair, Bama?
I was just bringing up, the appellant was talking a little bit about the SEQA, that it was kind of exempt from it because of one square foot. I just wanted to make sure you calculated the square footage to make sure that they, it really truly is only like, you know, it's, because that's kind of really close, as they pointed out. Would SEQA then trigger any kind of more parking analysis if that was actually having to go into that? Or what is that?
So to be clear, the Class 1 categorical exemption is the exemption that staff selected. The project is conditioned to be as proposed based on the plans, which is 2,499 square feet. So when it goes through the grading and building permit phases, we would also be checking to make sure it's consistent with that. But even if the project were to attempt to be revised to over 2,500 square feet, that doesn't necessarily trigger an environmental impact report. It just triggers an additional evaluation of, is it exempt through any other categorical or statutory exemptions per SEQA? And if not, then an initial study would be prepared to determine what type of environmental process is required.
Thank you. That was a great explanation.
You don't, go ahead, Tom.
No, go ahead.
Well, I, I guess I'm trying, I'm, I don't know parking, but I have to think that our code addresses that. And, and so that said, I didn't understand the 2.5. And how do we know that there is a parking problem, other than what we heard today? That's one thing. And then if we were to approve it, they can always appeal it to city council. So those are two points.
Okay, and I was going to, just before you made your comment, make a suggestion or just throw out an idea to Commissioner Hayes. If you would like to make a motion that captures your thinking, that's certainly your, your, your right to do, and then see how that pings with the rest of the commission, or you could just let it go and let somebody else make a motion that doesn't capture that. Just wanted to offer that. This is your first meeting as a commissioner, just so you kind of know procedurally how this, how this all works. So you're, but you're welcome to, you know.
I have one question. So I want to understand how you came up with the 2.5, because you know more than I do. So I really would like to understand that.
So I pulled up my calculator on my phone. And then I did.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Hayes, when you're speaking, if you could lean into the microphone.
Oh, sorry. I pulled up my, my calculator on my phone, and then you just put in 310 seats, and you divide it by 124 spaces, and you get 2.5. So that way, we know how many seats they have for how many parking spaces that they were allocated, and we know that they were flowing over that allocation into some of the commercial space.
But my understanding is that they bought the commercial spaces, so now they have that parking. Now, maybe I'm wrong with that. And just the fact that you've made that calculation, what is that? So what? I mean, I don't get it.
Okay, here, so our zoning code currently says that you have one space for every four seats.
Got, got that part.
Based on their existing, the 310 seats that they have existing and the 124 parking spaces that they have, they have a parking utilization rate of 2.1 for every 2.5.
I get the math, believe me.
Okay, so the 2.5 seats, if we take that and multiply it, 2.5 spaces for every 660 seats, then you end up with needing 264 spaces just to meet the same type of demand that they have today. They're only proposing 237.
Okay.
So they're going to have a shortage of about 27 spaces that will probably end up parking somewhere else, and I'm assuming that's going to be on the street.
And is that legal? If they were to do that, then, but that's a legal thing, isn't it?
No, it is perfectly legal. It's just, it's, it's more of, I know just from working with residents that have, especially on Sundays, if they have their kids trying to come and visit them, where are they going to park? They don't have any additional off-street parking options. So it becomes a burden on them every Sunday. And a lot of these churches, it's not just on Sundays, they end up having special events or Wednesday services that can bleed into that, so.
Yeah, I would hope that the church would be a good neighbor, and if they had that, that they'd just go to another service to cut it down. Because, because we do have to live together, you know, church and residents. So anyway, that's all my thoughts.
Then they just need to reduce the number of seats that they had inside then, because if, if you reduce the number of seats they're providing inside to get down to that, that demand, then that would solve the problem. Maybe they'd have enough parking spaces on site.
Well, yeah, and, and what are the chances that they're going to fill every seat?
Right.
Every service?
Commissioner Custer, you?
Well, I mean, the thing I'm having trouble with is a little bit, the code says four seats per one space. Thank you. Yes. So it's our job and mine, I think, to meet that, to sort of enforce the code or make an exception with a conditional use permit, correct? But in this case, we don't need an exception because we have enough parking with the four seats per one space, correct?
We have enough per code.
What?
We have enough per code, but we might not have enough for the demand of the facility.
But I'm just simply saying it's not our job right this minute to sort of change the code.
Yeah, to your point, Susan, I think Tom has a great point. Let's just put a motion out there, vote on it, and then let's go from there.
So if somebody wants to start, I'll look to my right. Commissioner Hayes, if you'd like to make a motion. If not, then, you know.
I'll make a motion if Susan does, or Commissioner Hayes doesn't.
I'll make one too.
I know where I'm going to land on this. It's my first meeting. I tried. I will let you go.
Okay, sounds like.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we confirm issuance of a Class 1 categorical exemption per California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, 19, Section 153301, existing facilities, and Adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 2021 P13, upholding City Planner's approval of Administrative Development Plan ADP 2000005, and Administrative Conditional Use Permit ACUP 2000002.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Commissioner Custer. Anybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Commissioner Morrissey. Any further discussion? Commissioner Rains? Anything to add?
No, nothing. I'm ready to vote.
Okay. So we'll vote. Commissioner? Commissioner Custer, maker of the motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Morrissey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Obama?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes?
No.
Commissioner Rains?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I vote yes in favor of the applicant.
And I too vote yes. City Planner, if you could tally up the votes, but then also let us know, this is an item that is appealable, is that correct? Or?
Mr. Chairman, that is correct. It could be appealed to the council, or council also has the ability, what's called call for review, if two council members agree to call it up. So then they could do that on their own volition. We'll record it as six in favor and one vote no. That was by Commissioner Hayes. The motion passes.
Thank you. And a recusal by Commissioner Goodkind.
Thank you. And 6-1-1 with Goodkind recused.
Okay, good discussion, thank you. To our discussion items. Okay, we have several discussion items, and they are three different ones. A nomination, an appointment, and an election. So we'll start with Item 7, which is nomination of Downtown Advisory Committee Representative. Looks like, Mr. Hunt, you're going to do a presentation, or at least give us some information on what that means?
Yeah, really quickly, the Downtown Advisory Committee has jurisdiction just over the downtown zoning area. They meet quarterly. Quite often, their meetings are canceled, sometimes there's a special meeting. But the bylaws say that there's one member who's appointed by the, or from the Planning Commission. Technically, the nomination has to be approved by the mayor, so we would forward that to the mayor. She would make her nomination, and then that is approved by the city council.
Very good. Then I will ask for any nominations or a raise of hands by Commissioner who's interested. Let's go with a hand raised to see who's interested. Commissioner Rains, you could just verbally indicate whether or not you're interested in this opportunity or not.
I'm not interested in this time, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, anybody? Commissioner Goodkind?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Hayes. In this position. If she's interested.
Commissioner Hayes, you've been nominated, so yes, that would be the question, are you interested in serving on the Downtown Advisory Committee?
Sure.
The other nominations? Seeing none, we will submit your nomination, it sounds like the mayor will have to approve that. So you're nominated, and the mayor hopefully thinks that's a good idea, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, appointment of representative to the Beachfront Improvement Steering Committee. Again, City Planner, if you could tell us what this entails?
The city's undertaking a study to analyze options to improve our beachfront facilities. I believe it's the community center, the lifeguard station, and I think that's about it. And so they're forming a steering committee, be part citizens and part agencies, and so as part of that steering committee, they've asked that there be a planning commissioner appointed to that committee.
Okay, I will ask for any nominations?
I was kind of thinking, possibly our Commissioner Morrissey might want to be on that commission, or is that something you might want to do? I would nominate him if he would like.
I would love to do that.
Oh, all right.
Any other nominations? Commissioner Rains?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have one nomination that Mr. Morrissey would be the representative on the steering committee, and seeing no other nominations. This is a direct appointment by the Planning Commission, no further steps needed on this one, correct?
Correct, but could we get a vote on it, just because it's a formal nomination?
Commissioner, I'll do this formally. Commissioner Custer, you like that nomination?
Yes, I'm voting for him. I didn't know, I didn't hear whether you said, do I want to be nominated or do I want to? So I am voting for Tom to be.
Great. I too will support that. Vice Chair Obama?
Yes, I support.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes.
And Commissioner Goodkind?
Hmm, let me think about it. Absolutely, yes, thank you for serving.
And Commissioner Rains?
I vote yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll mark that seven in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Brings us to our last discussion item, election of Planning Commissioner Chair and Vice Chair. I think we know what this entails, I don't know, so we need your presentation. It's to chair these meetings, and in the absence of the chair, the vice chair takes over to run the meetings and make sure that it's done in an orderly fashion, as hopefully it was done tonight. So I'll look for nominations for, let's start with the chair.
I would, personally, I think you'd do a great, Tom, a job, Tom, and I don't know if you're interested in doing it again, but I would suggest that we vote for you if you want to do it.
Yes.
Thank you for that endorsement and kind words, Tom. Yes, I would, I'd be interested in remaining as a chair for the next foreseeable future, if that's the wish of the rest of the commission.
Yeah, I think so.
But I will ask for any other nominations. Commissioner Rains?
No, Chairman, but I second your nomination.
Thank you. Let's do a formal vote, though, just to make it clear for the record. Commissioner Custer?
I vote yes, you've done a good job.
Thank you.
I want to give some kind words to.
Kind words, yeah.
Commissioner Morrissey?
Absolutely.
Vice Chair Obama?
I would, in agreement.
Commissioner Hayes?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Goodkind?
Yes, you've done an outstanding job in a very difficult year, and so happy to give you my support for that, absolutely.
Thank you, and I'm glad to be back in chambers. It was at times awkward and unruly, I think, to do it with the COVID, half of us here, half of us not, and all of that. So I appreciate the kind words. Commissioner Rains?
Yes, unequivocally.
Thank you. Likewise for Vice Chair, looking for nominations. Again, it serves in the absence of the chair to run the meetings. Vice Chair Obama, you've done a very nice job in this COVID era as well, so I appreciate that as a chair.
Well, thank you very much for your compliment, but I'd like to step down from my vice chair duties, and I'd like to nominate a new commissioner to take on that, and I think that, I think we should stick with the Toms. And give it to Tom.
Then we can remember the names easily.
So I nominate Tom as our vice chair, if the others agree.
Oh, yes.
Any other nominations? Vice, or Commissioner Rains?
No, thank you.
Okay, then it looks like we've got a nomination for Vice Chair, for Commissioner Morrissey. Do you agree with that? Commissioner Custer, is that a yes?
I agree with that, the Toms will be fabulous.
The two Toms. I can support that as well. Vice Chair, for the moment?
Yes, I would like to support that.
Vice, or Commissioner Hayes? Commissioner Goodkind?
Yes, definitely.
And I think we had an affirmation already from Commissioner Rains.
That is correct, I vote yes.
Okay, that takes care of business on the discussion items. So we'll go to City Planner, Commissioner Reports, for the new commissioners. This is an opportunity for you to provide input on anything, really. We sometimes introduce something that is generally relatable to the Planning Commission, something that you're doing in your work, or something that you've read that applies to what we're doing here. So it's an opportunity for you just to contribute whatever it is you like. So all started off, I really don't have anything to add this evening, other than I'm glad that we're generally here this evening, and we've got the public back. It's great to see everybody, and hopefully we don't fall back, and we continue to do this. So that being said, having walked through the COVID era with city staff, I thank you for all the effort that you've put into that. It was not easy, and we learned along the way, and I think we got pretty decent along the way as well, in our meetings on how to Zoom pretty effectively. There was just a few bumps here and there, so I appreciate what you folks did for us to get us through that period.
Seems like as soon as we figured out the new system, they'd change it, and we'd have to go to a new system.
Exactly. Vice Chair Obama?
As an architect, I get magazines that always tell you about what's going on in the world, and this latest one, I got one on small houses, big impact. In Austin, Texas, there's a project that they've actually put together for 545 small, affordable houses that they're able to let people that maybe can't afford to buy a real, you know, full-size house, be able to acquire, and they're small, they have common kind of kitchens and some of that, common bathrooms, and they rent for $250 to $450 a month, and it's been successful. They actually went to Phase 2. So I mean, it's kind of something that maybe, as a city, we can look at something like that possibly to provide a house that actually would be affordable to people that, you know, that can't afford a full, I know, market-rate house in Oceanside anymore, just a smaller. Anyway, I thought it was pretty interesting, so if anybody's interested, I'd send you the article, but.
Yeah, I'd like to see it.
Yeah, it was good.
Thank you. Commissioner Goodkind?
I don't think I have anything, but yeah, thank you to staff and our chair for leading us very effectively through the pandemic, and it's much appreciated. Thanks for all, you know, coordinating all my Zoom attendance and all that, I really appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Morrissey?
Well, I just want to agree with you to welcome our two commissioners, two new commissioners, so Hayes and Rains, welcome. And Commissioner Goodkind, you're great on Zoom, but I've loved seeing you here, so welcome back. And one of the things I'm starting to do every Sunday with my wife, and we meet some friends down at Buckner Park for, that is the greatest little place, have a little breakfast burrito on a Sunday and then walk. And I met somebody that wants to know why we have an aquatic center, but we can't use it, and I guess it's some funding, but do you know when we're going to, so I could report back to him on Sunday, wanting to start swimming laps at the, you know, at the new aquatic center?
Commissioners, I don't know off the top of my head, but we can get that information to you. I understand it's pending.
He's, it's killing him. He wants to, he wants to break through the fence and start running, in fact, he already has jumped in the pool.
We won't raise his name.
We didn't hear that.
Yeah, yeah, so.
City engineer, it looks like he has an update.
Good evening again, Commissioners, that is my project. I've been the one instrumental in making sure that gets completed. We are still working through some IT issues and some furniture fixtures and equipment. We're looking for midsummer to open after we get our staff trained and after we get all of the equipment in and up and operational. So it's not quite there yet, even though it looks great and looks good from the outside.
I'm giving him your phone number.
Thank you.
Is there going to be a big ribbon-cutting kind of thing when you're ready to open? Or some formal opening?
Yes, we are planning a dedication ceremony.
Oh, great, yeah, I drove by, and I actually didn't even know it was there, it was done yet, well, done-ish, and beautiful, beautiful building.
Thank you. The contractor was quite instrumental in pushing forward despite some delays, and actually finished ahead of schedule.
Good to hear.
May I suggest, instead of just a ribbon-cutting, maybe a pool diving?
Yeah, how about a splash?
You guys all just take, just jump in.
There are many thoughts going around, Commissioner.
Who actually built the pool? Who's the pool contractor?
Contractor is PCL Incorporated, out of San Diego.
But they weren't the pool contractor?
They did not build the pool, the pool itself was constructed by California Pools.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks for that update, Brian.
You're welcome.
Did I get your comments? That was pretty quick.
That was great, yeah.
Yeah, ask and you shall receive.
Commissioner Custer?
I'm just glad to be back, it's very good to be here again.
Good to see you.
And that's all, yeah.
Commissioner Hayes?
I'm just happy to be here tonight, so thanks for the interesting discussion, letting me go.
Welcome, and Commissioner Rains?
Yep, thank you, thank you for my fellow commissioners and city staff. Sorry I'm not there in person, hopefully my work schedule will allow me to be there as soon as possible, but just want to give a shout out to all my fellow commissioners, you know, we spent about a little over three hours here tonight, and that's all volunteers, so I thank everybody for their spirited discussion and their time.
Thank you.
Thank you. City Planner, update on projects?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your May 3rd agenda includes an analysis of our CIP and whether it conforms with our general plan, and as a reminder, that's not an exercise to weigh in on the merits of those CIP projects, it's just whether they conform with our general plan or not. We're also trying to get you your annual work program, or work plan on that date. May 17th, you have an Amazon distribution facility in the industrial park, that's generating a lot of interest from the neighbors. Also, there's a variance at 25 St. Mallow, and the Adult Cannabis Municipal Code and Zoning Amendments that council directed staff to bring forward, they would essentially remove the restriction on medical cannabis only for our cannabis facilities. June 7th, the Housing Element Update is coming for your recommendation, this is mandated to be updated. Technically, the deadline was April 15th, but there's 120-day buffer that we can still adopt it and not lose our status with our housing element. And also, we will be bringing a zoning amendment to allow emergency shelters with a streamlined review on city-owned properties, so if it's city property, the review process would be a lot quicker. Right now, most of our zones would require a full CUP. Council, going back to April 7th, both the Left Coast and the Buddies CUP, those are cannabis facilities, they were both approved. The 28th, April 28th, there's a workshop scheduled to get comments on the South Morro Hills framework that this body commented on recently. May 5th, there'll be a contract awarded to review our inclusionary housing fees to make them more attractive to the developer to actually provide the housing units on-site. That's just a contract award. June 2nd, the Adult Cannabis Zoning and Code Amendments that I just talked about, June 16th, the Emergency Shelter Zoning Amendment. June 23rd is a workshop in the afternoon, but we're asking for adoption, and that's of the Housing Element Update. Again, we are under a mandate to have it updated with a grace period by August 15th, or we then go into a four-year review cycle of our housing element, so we really don't want that to happen. And then we do have an August 4th placeholder with council in case in June, with their review, they want some revisions, so we do have the ability to come back. Regarding COVID, tonight, there wasn't a capacity issue, but I think there may be because we didn't get the word out very well, it's not that we were hiding it, it's just that we just put it on the agenda and word didn't get out. I think maybe there'll be more in the future, so we'll probably still continue to wrestle with that issue of capacity and how we deal with it. You heard Tom mention that there's a capacity, we'll have people out in the lobby. As the tiers lift, I believe the capacity will lift, and then the governor has said in June 15th, there won't be any tiers, so we'll see what happens between now and then. If that holds, the city is anticipating having no Zoom meetings at all, it would just be all live, just as it was before. And to be honest, there's been a lot of talk in the planning community about the benefits of having Zoom, and that there are some people who appreciate it. That's the city's call, we'll just, we'll let you know how it goes. Well, finally, I sent an email recently regarding the Lomer Flood Plane Map Amendment for North River Farms. This was requested by, I believe, one or two Planning Commission members, and I owe Brian two beers now. He's here to explain that, if you have any questions. While he's walking down, I can give you the Cliff Notes version, is the floodplain zones are given a broad brush, they're analyzed at a very small scale, and so within that small scale, there's an ability to do a refined site-specific analysis. And so within that small scale, there's an ability to do a refined site-specific analysis. And that, there's a process that allows that. It's very technical, and you either meet it or not. And it affects floodplain insurance and other things. Of course, the base flood level, we commonly require buildings to be raised above that by two feet, and there's other regulations. But it also, again, affects flood insurance. So Brian?
Thank you, Jeff. That was a pretty good summary of the whole process.
Brian, I think the hour is up. I think they're started again.
So I guess maybe because they're going to get started again, if you just have general questions, I could field those or, because I think Jeff covered it pretty well, just in broad general strokes.
I heard something about the, something about every year, you can, you can actually look through the floodplains and adjust them. Is that, is that true? Every year, they're getting adjusted? Or, I mean, that, that whole thing was brought up because of the fact that the consultant that was hired from Intercal's team was the one in all of, I guess, California, or whatever it was. He was like one of two or three people that could actually change it. And it was, that was kind of controversial. I think that's why it kind of came up again, like, how did that get changed? And how does that happen? And?
Right. Commissioner Obama? You only get to do it once for each property. FEMA comes through about every decade or so on upstate flood insurance rate map or the firm. And they use the information that they garner over the time. It's like a building code. You know, you get a building code, it's good for three years, but every year, they issue on a RADA. So FEMA approves these Loma documents, LOMAR, CLOMAR documents. Once they approve it, they put it on their map that, hey, this little island is now out of the floodplain. So once that's done, there's no changing that. But when they come through and they update the document, they take that information. Okay, this is good. We can raise that up out of the floodplain. So when we adjust our floodplain boundaries, now we can include that as outside of Zone A, Zone B, Zone E, whatever the zone that it happens to work in. We're fortunate in the city, we only have two zones, A and V, but there's a whole host of As, like AE and A99. So once that's done, there's really no going back. We can't change that. We, as the city, can't initiate that. It's done.
So that's, so now it's been changed, and so now it's done?
No, it's done. So the only way that FEMA would even consider looking at it is if somebody came back with a whole new, brand-new study.
Right.
And said, no, all that data that you looked at, all that data that your experts vetted was completely wrong, and this is how it was wrong.
Got it.
That's the only way they would look at it. But they're not going to do it for free.
Right.
So.
Thank you.
Brian, could you explain the city's role in this? I mean, how much influence and veto power does the city have over these LOMARS?
The only time we have to mirror on this approval process is if we don't agree with the assessment of the engineer. But we're just one small cog in that. Even if we say no, we disagree with it, and we don't send the community action form that needs to go with it, FEMA still has the authority to go through, look at this, and say, no, we disagree with you. We find all the hydrology and hydraulic studies correct. We find everything correct. Therefore, we are going to grant them that document, that status. So it's a process, and it takes several months to get through the process. Oftentimes, with FEMA coming back to the applicant saying, we need this additional information. We don't really agree with, with your conclusions here. How are you going to prove that your conclusions are right to us? And only when the applicant proves the, the document is fully vetted, then FEMA will go ahead and say, yeah, we're good, and approve the document. So our floodplain ordinance is kind of bifurcated. We have a CLOMAR, and we have a LOMAR or a LOMA addition. So we cannot issue a grading permit until FEMA has approved a CLOMAR. We cannot issue a building permit to go vertical until a LOMAR has been issued. So what's the difference between the two, other than grading versus building? The CLOMAR is, this is my theoretical plan that I want to do. The LOMAR is, okay, you completed everything you said you were going to do in your theory, so now we can issue your LOMAR at this point. So yes, you have met all the conditions of your theoretical plan. I've turned those into reality, so now you can go for it.
Sounds good.
Very complicated process, very.
The CLOMAR and the LOMAR.
CLOMAR and LOMAR, who knew?
I got the CLOMAR and the LOMAR.
So but a property owner has the right to request at any time their property be reevaluated. As I stated in my memo, FEMA comes through, they look at all the existing data, but they do not send people out to the field generally. They just take the available data based off the last firm, and at a 20,000-foot level,